It is now five o'clock. And we thank everyone for being present tonight. And we will now begin our first school board meeting of the brand new year, Tuesday, January the 11th, 2022, here in the School Administration Board Room. At this time, I would like us to move to Section B of our agenda with the approval of the agenda. And members of the board, you have had the board agenda featured on board docs. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Is there a second?
No second.
They're moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we would approve the agenda as featured for our January 11th meeting. If there's no further questions or discussion, I'm going to ask that the clerk would call the roll.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Sinha.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, we're going to stand now for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We certainly, as we prepare for all that we will be able to do in the next six months, we do want to acknowledge at this board meeting that today is our superintendent's birthday, and we certainly will say...
Thank you.
Thank you. I also, very quickly, which is just normative for us, we obviously have board norms and protocols in place, and it is my duty as chair just to remind each of us that we have those norms and protocols to govern us over the next six months as we so choose and if we make any adjustments. So be it, and all of the materials before you. And so I wanted the clerk just to have us that before us as we get started for the year. And I know that we will govern ourselves accordingly, and I'm excited about, I believe we can do some of our best work that we've ever done in these next six months. With that in mind, we will now move to Section C of our agenda, which is our public comments. And we are champions of public comments and communication. And of course, one of our protocols is reflective of the importance of communication, and I'm delighted about the new initiatives that I see that the division is putting forward as it relates to communication. And so we want that, and we're seeking to use as many vehicles as we can to interface with the public. One of the things that we enjoy is our public comments. And so tonight, Madam Clerk, do we have any written comments or phone-recorded comments?
No, sorry.
So we do have two persons who have signed up to give us public comments tonight. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties. Engage in behavior that disrupts the meetings or intimidates others or address the school board on issues due to that concern the services policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. A total allotted time for public comments at the school board meetings is 30 minutes, and those comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. And so we are thankful for two speakers tonight. Happy New Year to you and welcome to the public comment section for this year. First off, will be Jeffrey Wooders, who is going to talk to us about COVID. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Jeffrey Wooders. I'm a senior at EC Glass High School and Central Junior Governor's School. Happy New Year to you all and happy birthday, Dr. Edwards. I'm grateful that y'all keep giving us the opportunity to come and speak to you about things that concern us. I'm going to keep it real with you. I usually prepare something in advance. I read off of my phone, or I have facts and figures put in front of me. But I don't have anything prepared today. I'm just going to speak from the heart. Actually, as I stepped out of the car when I got here, I got an email and a call from EC Glass that we have gone virtual, remote learning, for the next three days until Friday. And I will be honest, I don't like virtual learning. I don't like Zooms. I'm a very extroverted person. I like to talk to people and I like to interact with people. But even I can see with as much hatred as I have in my heart for virtual learning that it is by far the safer and more effective option right now. I don't know if you've seen inside of our classrooms at Glass the past couple of days, but I've got classes where half the students are out. The number of substitute teachers that we have, we had to move basketball games because we literally did not have enough people to safely staff. And when we have rates from Omicron so high in the community, when we have half of classes quarantining or actively sick, when I have two friends who are vaccinated and boosted, and they've worn their masks the entire time, they have done everything they're supposed to, and still gotten infected, I can see that it is the only safe option is to move to virtual learning. And I get that there will be sacrifices. There may be learning loss. There may be mental health difficulties. But I would argue that those disadvantages are worth it in the face of a disease that has infected more people than ever. And despite some people saying that it is less dangerous, the immune system still causes long-term effects. It's still so virulent that if it infects someone who is immunocompromised or has not been vaccinated, or an elderly person, it can still be incredibly dangerous. So as much as I don't want to move online, and as much as I would much rather finish out this year fully in person, I'm urging you, and I'm speaking before you today, to please consider moving all of Lynchburg City schools online, at least until this wave of Omicron peaks, and perhaps weeks after that, until we can make sure that we are past this stage of the pandemic. It is the only safe way to get kids in our schools and learning, and I would much rather take my health than anything else. Thank you, and Happy New Year to you all.
Thank you, Mr. Wooders. Thank you very much. Our next speaker tonight is Mr. Andrew Glover, who will talk to us about masks, and he is representing conservative parents of Lynchburg. Welcome, Mr. Glover.
Thank you. Cloth masks are no longer considered high-quality enough for protection. Now, I've been sharing this fact, that cloth masks don't work, but these words were not just spoken by me, but rather they were shared by the Centra Health Center system today at 12:30 during their news conference. This proclamation comes on the heels of several other high-profile health networks, including George Washington University, Boston Medical, St. Jude, coming to the same conclusion. Even the former FDA commissioner stated on CBS's Face the Nation, quote, "Cloth masks are not going to provide a lot of protection." That's the bottom line. The commissioner went on to clarify this by stating, "A cloth mask is not going to protect you from a virus that spreads through airborne transmission. It could better protect you if it was spread through trophle transmission," something like the flu, "but not for something like this coronavirus." In fact, we heard just testimony that students who are wearing masks, vaccinated, boosted, are still getting the vaccine. Masks don't work. So if a mask can't stop an airborne virus, what do masks stop? They stop the critical and foundational nonverbal communication that is instrumental in the learning process. Masks also shield our students' faces from their peers, hindering social connection and interaction, and leading to the reduction of students' self-esteem. Now, these assertions aren't made in a vacuum. 60% of the school last year failed at least one class. On top of that, your own studies and reports show that within the LCS school system, suicide attempts were up 50%, depression was up 15%, non-school-related screen time is up 61%, and there's an overall increase in negative body image perception. Coincidentally enough, on your agenda item I-2, you'll be reviewing a proposal to strike and remove the school policy 7-33.3, otherwise known as the school uniform. Assuming that you go ahead and strike the policy from your records, Lynchburg City will essentially be saying that the students can show up butt naked as long as they wear their masks. Teaching children to comply and that masks make them safe is, at this point, reckless, and it's abusive. It's time to end the school mask policy and let our students return to learn truly. And I'm sorry, we are, we need to learn to live with this. I also just got the notification about 10 minutes ago about the school's closing. We should be well beyond this. We need to open our schools and get back to work. The whole community has, and it's time that Lynchburg City Schools does too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover, for your comments. That concludes our public comment section for tonight. Once again, thank both of you, and we do want the public to know that we're here to listen. All right, we will now move to Section D, which is our student representative comments. And we always are grateful for these presentations. And so at this time, our first presentation will be from Jaden Scott from EC Glass High School.
Hi, everyone. I'm so glad to be back. I want to say Happy New Year to everyone, and I hope that everyone had a great break. That's actually where I'm going to be starting my presentation today, with a welcome back. So, yes, welcome back. We actually had a little delay in our start to the school year, which we're happy to be back now, so we'll take that and keep on moving. And we also want to give a special thank you to the group Men to School for coming out and showing up and supporting us on our transition back into the building. And next up, I do want to give a special recognition for the EC Glass Rucker Cup. This is one of Glass's oldest awards, and it's given to a deserving and dedicated football player. And the description on the award reads as follows. "The Charles Thomas Rucker II Memorial Cup is presented annually by Dr. C.E. Rucker to the EC Glass High School Athlete Exceling in Football Scholarship and Citizenship." So this year, the winner was Mr. Eli Wood, so I do want to say congratulations to you. And also, at the banquet when they were doing the announcement, this is actually one of the first times that we've had brothers on the Rucker Cup. So Eli won this year, and then a couple years ago, his brother Sackett won. So we now have brothers winning the Rucker Cup award. Along the same lines of just awards and giving out and showing our accolades for everyone, I do want to take a second to recognize Ms. Hannah Ness and Mr. Luke Palas. Each year, our Athletic Boosters organization presents an award to a student athlete that they feel has met certain criterias in the area of scholarship, athletic ability, leadership, and integrity. And so, yes, these two won this year. These are our most recent recipients, and they are from our cross-country team. All right, and so normally, I like to come on here and keep everything super positive, but I do like to reach out to the school and see what's going on. And so far with the scheduling change, the possibility of the scheduling change, there has been a lot of pushback on it. I just wanted to be honest about it. I've been getting a lot of feedback, a lot of emails reaching out from students saying that they really don't want this block scheduling change. I'm not sure what the update on that is, but I did want to come back and just reiterate that. I know last meeting we had, there was a lot of talk about it. So I did just want to go over the main reasons as to why a lot of students aren't so happy with this, and it would just be the concern for learning loss, and then the conflict with CTE classes, as well as traveling or competitions with music classes like orchestra or band, anything like that. And so then, jumping back on to a more positive note, I do want to take a minute to recognize Mr. Landon Collins. He was a 2019 graduate from EC Glass, and while he was at Glass, he was enrolled in the criminal justice program at our school, and he even went on to compete in the Skills USA in the Skills USA Contest for Criminal Justice at the state level. Not only did he study at EC Glass, but he also went on to CVCC, and he pursued an education of administration of justice. So now, speeding up to present day, throughout COVID, he's went through a lot of obstacles, but still made many strides in his education and his work. And because of this, we are now able to refer to Mr. Collins as Officer LR Collins. So I just wanted to extend a huge congratulations from the Hilltopper Community, past and present students. This is an amazing accomplishment, and we're so happy to see such amazing things happening in our own community, from our own small schools, you know, that came from LCS, the public schools, then he went to the community college, and now he is where he is. So we are one hundred percent so excited and happy about that. Thank you for all of your hard work, and thank you for your dedication to our community. And then also, SCA, last December, well, last year in December, ECG SCA hosted a food and clothing drive, and this was a huge success. And so I do want to take the time to thank any and everyone who participated, whether it was teachers, students, the family, friends, anybody. And so I do want to give a shout out to Ms. Weeks, her eighth-period advisory. They brought in the most items, and so for their award, they were given a Chick-fil-A lunch. So once again, thank you all so much for all of your hard work and your time and your donations. And then, I do want to wrap it up here, but I do want to give out one more thank you to our permanent building substitutes. This year has been a whirlwind. Last year was a whirlwind. We're just kind of picking up and seeing where we can make improvements, and seeing how else we can better our school. And so, these substitutes, these people have been literally amazing. They're in the building every day. They're so dedicated to making our school a better place, to giving ECG our community feeling. And so they are so valuable to our school. And so I do want to say thank you to all of them. I don't know where we'd be right now without these people. So thank you all so much. I have listed their names on here. So just a special shout out and a thank you to them, and just thank you. And I normally do end it on a thank you note. So once again, thank you all so much for your time, and just remember, together we keep climbing.
All right, wow. I'm gonna reserve my comments until after the second presentation. From Heritage High School, is Yuzen with us tonight, Tina, or someone else?
Yes.
All right, go right ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm so excited to be back. I did miss you all, and Happy New Year to everybody. And I wanted to start off this new year by reiterating our pioneer motto at Heritage. We are welcoming, encouraging, achieving, responsible, and engaged. First of all, before winter break, our National Honor Society was hard at work with two end-of-the-semester service projects. The first one was candy grams, and students at Heritage had the opportunity to buy a candy cane and a message for $1 and have it delivered, all in the holiday spirit. And the next project was a coin drive, and this project was a homeroom competition, and we raised money, and the winning homeroom will be getting donuts. And thank you to all our students and all our NHS members for raising money for a good cause. Next up is the Heritage High School Literary Magazine. They are still accepting submissions on the grand topic of culture, and this week's topic is the weather and season. So if any Heritage student wants to submit an entry of photography or literature, please email it to the email address on your screen. The Lynchburg Beacon of Hope will be hosting a virtual meeting with business professionals tomorrow from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. This meeting is open to LCS alumni from the classes 2013 through 2021, and it will be a wonderful chance to look at future opportunities in the business side, and we hope to see our alumni there. Last but not least, we have some upcoming events in our Heritage High School Athletics Department. The Heritage High School Slim Team will be having a meet this Friday at the Jamerson Y. The Track Team will be having a meet at Virginia Beach this Friday as well. And the Heritage High School Wrestling Team will be participating in the Sentinel Quad at Liberty High School on Wednesday. That's all from me. Thank you all so much for your attention.
Can we give these two representatives a hand? I don't know if any of the other board members would like to say anything, but the quality of the presentations and the communication skills of these two students, it's amazing. I mean, literally, it's amazing. And so we are very proud of both of you, and you were able to share with us what we needed to know about pertinent issues and things going on in your schools. And so thank you so very much for the outstanding work both of you are doing as our student representatives. We'll now move to Section E, our finance report, and we'll yield now to Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, and I echo your sentiments for the student voice, and Mr. Wooders is leaving, but I also am glad that he shares his voice with us as well, representing what our students think. It's always a pleasure just to sit back and listen to them. We're gonna move on to the November financial report, and that is actually gonna be presented this time by the interim CFO, who has stepped up in the absence of a full-time CFO, Monae Davis, who works in the finance department, who is doing a wonderful job of helping us keep the ball rolling and keeping on top of our finances. So you have the financial report in front of you, and I invite Ms. Davis, who is on the screen, to just kind of give a quick summary of the report.
Well, good evening, Board. I just want to say that I've hit the ground running, and I'm trying to keep us all together, and I think we're doing a great job. I just got back from the VASFASBO Conference, and I just received a tremendous amount of information concerning the governor's budget and current financial situations and issues that each school district is facing, and I'm looking forward to discussing that with our leadership team. But tonight, I'm gonna present the financial reports through November 30, 2021. So our current adjusted budget remains the same, still showing those donations, and the fund balance amount at 102,487,94301. The revenue received to date is at 34.83%, which we did provide you with a detailed revenue report. And then our expenditure to date was 34.98% with our encumbrances totaling 87.77%. And our encumbrances, again, are our open POs and all our obligated contracted payroll. Does anybody have any questions? There's also detailed reports on board docs, and also, we wanted to talk to let you know that we heard you in wanting a more detailed report, so we're working on that. Hopefully, we'll have that for you next month.
Well, first of all, Ms. Davis, we want to thank you. This is your first report to us, and we thank you for that, and the way in which you have shared with us today. Are there any members of the board that were Dr. Gupta?
When do you think the health benefits for month of December will be available? I see a balance of 364, and we are about $700,000 less than what we started, the fiscal year.
Right. I do think that that is going to be a concern. We've already talked to Dr. Edwards and the senior leadership, and we're looking at that. It'll be something that we'll probably discuss more next month on solutions. But I do think it will be more, much more.
Any other questions for Ms. Davis? Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, a couple of the personnel expense accounts are a little high for this time of year. Is there, can you or Dr. Edwards talk to those?
I didn't notice anything normally, but...
Uh, it's what I'm guessing, but if I look at, say, pupil transportation function 3200, other expense is 140% roughly.
I'm catching up to you. Hold on.
Yeah, sure.
I want to get back to you on that one. That does seem extremely high, so I will look at that and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
I think other board members have still noted that, also, Dr. Nillis. And so, Dr. Edwards, we'll get back with us on...
Yeah, we have a finance committee coming up too, so we can dig into the details a little bit, so that we can make sure we send something out to the board.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Davis?
I just want to say thank you for stepping up and doing so well for us. Thank you.
My pleasure, Director.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for sharing today, and we're looking forward to working with you as we go through this very important part of board governance and the preparation of our budget, et cetera. So thank you so much. All right, we'll now move to Section F, which is our consent agenda. And tonight, on the consent agenda, a minute from the December the 7th meeting, our school board work session, December the 14th, the human resources report, and the human resources policy review. Is there any discussion around the consent agenda, and if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. A motion made by Dr. Nillis, seconded by Dr. Carter. Any further discussion? During now, we'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
School Board Member, Tros.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion for adjournment.
All right, we will continue on. If there's no need for other comments in that section, and we will go to our school board member report, Section G. And our first report would be financing facilities. Dr. Nillis.
No report. We're meeting next week.
Thank you, sir. Persons govern themselves accordingly. Governor's School Committee, Dr. Gupta.
No meeting in January. No meeting in February.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Lowell Regional, Dr. Carter.
No report. Our next meeting is February.
Thank you so much. STEM Academy, Dr. Nillis.
No report. We're meeting in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, sir. Looking forward to it. All right. And Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations, Dr. Senha.
Well, we met today, in fact. We reviewed a game plan for those of us attending the Capitol Conference, January 24th and 25th. That's Dr. Carter, Dr. Coleman, and myself. And then we took some time to discuss some of the challenges we're facing as a division relating to parents, students, and the community, some of the pertinent issues happening, and how difficult it is to reach different audiences, and strike the right tone, get the information out in a timely manner, not overwhelmed, but provide enough. And in many ways, it's a no-win situation, but I applaud the Central Office for trying new ways of outreach. I continue to have hope that the community conversations will gain traction. I think they're a good thing. And again, I encourage families to reach out to me or any other school board member with suggestions or concerns over communication issues. A lot of us are overwhelmed, understaffed, and it is a real challenge to meet the information needs of the community. But we are working on it. We're aware of problems. We're trying to address them as best we can. It's just a difficult landscape right now.
Any questions for Dr. Senha? All right, and of course, the clerk has fully alerted everyone concerning the Capitol Conference, and so she indicated those who are planning to attend. But if anyone needs to reconsider, you certainly can do so. Thank you so much, Dr. Senha. All right, that will now move us to our Education Task Force, and I do want to make it clear that the members of council will know that the school board is hoping that they will have a great year as well over at City Hall. They approved our broadband initiative tonight, and we're thankful for that. And yet, the schedule has not permitted them to discuss the Education Task Force. I do want to acknowledge that on this Thursday, from 8:45 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., that Dr. Carter, myself, Dr. Edwards, and whomever else will be meeting with the mayor, vice mayor, city manager, et cetera. And at that time, I am of the assumption there will be some discussion about the task force and other dynamics on their side. That is all that I have to report at this time. Any questions? All right, thank you so kindly. Number seven, item seven here, Partners in Education. It is clear that our administration is working to make sure that our community is vested in Partners in Education, and to our knowledge, that group is beginning to make efforts to create energy in the community for Partners in Education to help Lynchburg City Schools to do what we can to help student performance in the classroom in all of the ways that there may be needs. And so needs are being identified, and at the appropriate time, we'll be able to hear greater clarity on how Partners in Education will be fully rolling out and achieving something very important, and that is bringing partners together to help us with our kids. Dr. Gupta.
Have they talked about helping us in reducing the achievement gap? That there could be a key partner in that goal of LCS.
Madam Clerk, if that could be so noted, I think that there would be, Dr. Gupta, an obvious need to tie all of it. Everything that we do, we need our entire community. And so there was, there's figures around, floating around, about in the region, some 6,000 to 7,000 potential partners. Many of them have employees that are less than 15, and so about 150 maybe have real big operations. But we want to get people working where they're needed to reduce achievement gaps and other types of things. And as that is put out there, I think it's going to be really meaningful for us going forward. And so that is the extent of what I can share tonight relative to Partners in Education. Dr. Brennan, anything you would like to share?
No, thank you, Dr. Coleman.
All right, thank you so kindly. All right, the Education Foundation, Dr. Senha and Mr. Tros.
I had an informal meeting with Jody Gillette to talk about her relationship with the board. Things are going well at the Education Foundation. It continues to be a very robust organization with robust resources and community support, does a lot of good work for the schools, for our teachers. She expressed some concern about, you know, the toll the disruptions caused by COVID and other matters are taking on everybody, particularly our teachers. And so that was a concern that was expressed. And the folks of the Educational Foundation Board and associates continue to be available to support the schools, offer guidance and advice when possible in support of the schools during this difficult time. And we have arranged to lock in a more regular set of meetings, so that I'm not always coming here saying "no report," which is on me. And so we'll be setting that up soon.
Thank you, Dr.
Oh, one other thing. She also expressed concern about Partners in Education, so I'm sure she'd be glad to hear what you reported, because she feels it's a good partner organization for them. Oh, one other thing. She also expressed concern about Partners in Education, so I'm sure she'd be glad to hear, um, what you reported, uh, because she feels it's a, a good partner organization for them, that although there may be some overlap, they have cross purposes, can support each other in their aims, and, uh, she feels it's very impart, important that Partners for Education, um, uh, get up and rolling and be, uh, more active and involved than it has been in recent years.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Appreciate that. Mr. Tross, anything you would like to add?
Nothing further than.
All right, any questions for them? Thank you so much. We will now go to the last item, Beacon of Hope, Dr. Nillis and Dr. Senha.
I don't have a report.
All right, so thank each of you for the work that you're doing. I love how we've laid this out, and persons can be involved in the ways in which they can, so thank you for that. Uh, section H is our Comprehensive Strategic Plan. We have no report tonight, but I do want to emphasize to the community that we have a comprehensive strategic plan, and everything we do in relationship to our agenda is tied to the Comprehensive Strategic Plan, and of course, a part of our board governance, uh, is, uh, making sure that that happens, and so that's very critical, that everyone knows that, and we would certainly be delighted that you would take the time out to look at it on our webpage, et cetera. Having said that, we will now move into section I, Unfinished Business, and the first matter will be the LCS Community Update, in which there are, uh, three particular matters that will be discussed, uh, under the leadership of our Superintendent, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so thank you, and again, Happy New Year to everyone, and, um, we do have the members of the high school team with us virtually, um, on Zoom, uh, to discuss block scheduling. Um, if you recall, in June of last year, the high school teams, both schools, came to discuss the current schedule at that time, which was the A-B block schedule, and the potential for shifting to a four-by-four block schedule. Just a little history, originally, when we were in the, um, COVID pandemic, when it first started, one of our major goals with our schedule was to reduce the amount of movement, um, kids had in the building and interaction, so that's what, one of the first things that shifted us from a seventh-period day where kids were transitioning through seven different periods to a block schedule where children were moving, um, throughout the hallways a little bit less each day. Um, at that time in June, the team brought to the board, um, and is also included in our, uh, board docs, some information, some factual information about the pros and cons for the A-B block and the four-by-four block schedule, and over the last six months, up until the December board meeting, um, the team has worked, uh, and come back in December to discuss where they wanted to go for the upcoming school year. At the December meeting, there were still lots of questions, um, including those from parents, staff members, and students. Um, I think one of the things the students are like, "Just tell us what we need to know," short and sweet, so we hope that, um, that information got out, but we are staying with the A-B block. Um, so for some folks who don't even understand, if you have a, a student who is not in a high school, you might not even understand what a A-B block versus a four-by-four versus a seventh-period, uh, day looks like, but I wanted to provide some background information before we get to questions and the team, just about the thought behind scheduling and what a good schedule does, and why schools consider different schedules. So if you just look in the life of a student and figuring that they're done, and be, what happens between three and eleven PM? Well, many of our students participate in after-school activities, sports clubs, some of them work, they go home, they have dinner, they have family time, and then they also have review what happened during the day and homework. With a traditional seventh-period day, your students are going, our students are going home, and they're reviewing what happened in all seven classes, and could potentially have homework in all seven classes in preparation for the next day. This happens on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then, of course, Friday, they have the weekend in between. With the A-B schedule, the schedule that we currently have, again, between those hours of three and eleven, assuming that they go to bed at eleven, and we know many teenagers are staying up past that, but they still go home and do those activities, except with the A-B schedule, students have four classes that they are reviewing, that they have to go back, and four, an opportunity for four different sets of homework from the classes of the day. The next day, they have a different set of classes, probably three classes and an enrichment, or, um, a remedial class, or an advisement, um, and then it alternates every other day throughout the whole year. That is the current schedule. With the four-by-four block, what makes that different is the students still only have four classes each day, but they have the same four classes for the first two marking periods or the first semester, so instead of having seven or eight classes throughout the year that they are concentrating on, they would have four classes in the first semester that they would focus on, and four classes in the second semester that they would focus on. Now, why is this important? Why do, why do educators think about this? We think about the life in, of a student, and when you think about a student, one of the most important things that you need to do to be successful in school is time management, and when you think about time management and that frontal cortex and the development of it and all of those behavior things, for our children, that begins in adolescence, and it matures by the age of twenty-five. So some of the things when we're looking at schedules that we're asking our students to do is multitask and manage their time and make good decisions and be on time and manage projects for seven classes a day, four classes a day, or four classes in a semester. So it's one of the reasons why educators look at schedules and say, "How do young people learn, and how can we set them up for success and positive outcomes, so that they can not only learn the material, but dig deep in the things that they do?" So if anybody had a question, "Why were you even considering different schedules?" It's because as educators, we look at outcomes from the student perspective. Now, there is no one schedule that works for every student, and you have a, a school of over a thousand kids, a seven-day sched, seven-period schedule works for some, an A-B schedule works for some, a four-by-four schedule works for some, but there is no one perfect schedule, so the challenge we have is trying to figure out what would maximize outcomes for all students. During the December meeting, you heard lots of questions about CTE, and thank you, Jaden, for bringing it up. We do ask that, the students ask students. We want feedback from everyone, particularly the ones that are most affected by the schedule. That would be the students and the teachers. The students are in the classrooms learning, and the teachers are planning and prepping, um, for the material and delivering it, and that information has been solicited over the break, um, and, uh, our staff has weighed in to give the feedback that the A-B block is the best block for moving forward. Now, your next question will be, "Well, is that just for next year, Dr. Edwards? Will we be here again?" No, we're going to stay with the A-B block for several years. Can't promise you that how long that will be, but we will not be making any changes in the upcoming school year, and as one of my staff members said, we need to get very good at that A-B block. But we did make some changes, because along that, with the A-B block, there were also some questions about, "Well, can kids take an extra class? Do they have to have an advisory or an enrichment?" Uh, but there's also questions about learning loss, because when our counselors presented, they discussed the need to have some extra time during the day, because not everybody can come to a before-school or an after-school program or tutoring to address learning loss, and having that opening up to an eight-period during the A-B day to allow kids to take on another elective or be in a, an enrichment course that will help them with learning loss is what we're going to do in the upcoming, um, school year, so we're offering opportunities, um, for that. There'll be some more discussion about that when, uh, Deputy Superintendent Pugh talks about the program of studies, because you'll learn about opportunities that students will have for other courses in addition to the ones that are already in our schools, um, that they can take. So I've kind of talked about it a little bit from the standpoint of what a student's life, um, is like, but even our teachers, because if we want to maximize outcomes for our students, they have to have excellent teachers. So you go back to the same seventh-period day, I may be teaching five or six different classes and multiple preps. Each day I go home, the next day I come back, I have to prep for that. Our teachers also, although some of them coach and, and, um, advise after-school activities, they have families themselves, they go home, and, and I hope no one believes that a prep period during a school day is the only time a teacher is prepping. As a matter of fact, many of ours right now aren't even using that time to prep for school. There is a lot of work that happens at, at home, at night, on the weekends. So when you look at the schedule, again, looking, going from seven classes to four classes to four classes that are every other day, or just four classes in a short amount of period, you reduce the amount of content that both teachers and students need to focus on in a given period, but that doesn't come without sacrifice, right? And one of the things that we heard is, "What about the music program? We don't want our students to have music in the fall and not opportunity for music in the spring and competitions and those types of things." So after listening to all of the comments and concerns, and really talking with the staff, the students, and weighing in, that led to the decision of us staying with the A-B block, but not only just staying with the A-B block, but offering other opportunities for students who, if they are in good credit standing, and, and I know we talk a lot about learning loss, but we also need to provide opportunities for learning gain and learning expand, because we have students who aren't experiencing learning loss, and our school division is for them as well. So that, for those reasons, we are going to stick with the A-B block. Another difference between the seventh-period day and either the four-by-four or the A-B is the time. How much time is an individual class? So you can have anything, when you have a seven or eight-period day, from a forty, forty-five, fifty-minute period, and then you change and go to another forty-five, fifty-minute period, or the ninety-minute periods. Now, pros and cons. Ninety minutes, as a former science teacher, speaks inquiry to me. It allows me to do laboratory experiences and constructive activities with my students and get that thinking going, so that I access that higher level of Bloom's Tex- taxonomy, where students are creating, evaluating, judging, and doing the higher-level thinking. Sometimes a forty-minute period, particularly if you're in a performing arts, you just get started, and then the bell rings. Think about trying to get a student to create some artwork. You just get started, then the bell rings, and they have to put it away, and the next class comes in. So again, even time has pros and cons for different things, different folks, different periods. So for that reason, um, in discussing with the staff, again, the vote was to, to stay with the A-B block, the ninety-minute periods, which, when done in a very, um, constructive way, gives teachers the opportunity to use all of the effective teaching skills. You get formative feedback, assessment, you can do large-group instruction, small-group instruction, you can have students work on independent projects within a ninety-minute period, and that way we can meet the needs of our students. So I wanted to provide some context behind the what, the how, what does it mean, um, and the when, because there was a lot of concern about, um, whether or not this decision would be for next year and what would happen next year. I also have members from the high school team, both principals, I do believe, uh, are up there, I can see Ms. Flor, um, on there, who, um, I'm going to just ask them to say a few words, uh, just to add to anything that I've said, so ladies first, I'm going to start with you, Principal for EC Glass, Ms. Flor.
Well, thank you, Dr. Edwards, and you've done a great job summarizing that. I don't have a whole lot to add. Um, I will say I'm very thankful for the feedback from our faculty and staff. Um, we began discussing this, uh, back in October, and just the input and informal conversations I've had with students, uh, conversations that I had with parents, and so I appreciate, um, how passionate people are and, and their feedback too. Um, and I, I, this was a, an easy decision for, for, I think, for Tim and I. I don't want to make that speak for him, but we've had so much change going on that the, any inform, the concerns other people had, we had those concerns, and we just were busy working and keeping our buildings open, and so we had quality instruction and experiences going on, um, and we just did not have the time to answer some of those questions, and so, uh, we appreciate the feedback that our faculty and staff has given us, um, and I, I think this is the right decision to make. Tim?
Thank you, Rose. Uh, good evening, everyone. I agree. I appreciate the, the feedback from faculty and staff and community members. Um, ultimately, we want to do what's best for, for students and also want to do what's best for our staff. Um, you know, we often refer to our staff inherently as, as the commodity, and we want to do what's best for them oftentimes, and with this year and last year being challenged with COVID, a lot of what they've done from a lesson-playing standpoint has been geared towards what they're doing right now, and I think to, um, to undo that at this point, uh, with the uncertainty of, uh, next year and the years, years beyond, um, certainly comfortable, very comfortable with what we're doing with the, uh, A-B block scheduling, and, uh, look forward to having an opportunity to make this work even better, uh, next year as opposed to this year. I think we sort of know what to expect, uh, going into next school year with our scheduling, and I think we have an opportunity to get better at our craft from a scheduling standpoint, um, for meeting the needs of our students, and, um, I think our faculty will be better equipped with it as well.
Okay. Any questions that we can answer regarding the block scheduling?
Dr. Brennan?
I'd just like to thank the administration and the principals of the high schools for doing such a great job of reaching out to people to get information, students, staff, and the community. Um, as a, as a, someone who does not live the schedule the way you all do, I had my, my niece, who's a twelfth grader, Glass, walk me through it, and she thought it was very appropriate, particularly the electives that are added, and as a senior, although it will not affect hers, she liked that early dismissal in the afternoon for the twelfth graders too, so both those things were, were given high grades, but thank you all very much for the work, and I'm sure this is going to be a good plan for the future.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan, and of course, the board obviously knows that quite a bit of work has gone into all of this since we met last, and so is there any pertinent, uh, comments that you made at this time? Dr. Gupta.
Hello, Dr. Edwards, I agree with you, uh, because we are preparing them for the future, and when they go to college, they'll have ninety-minute classes, and they'll be on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday. So we are doing a surface, service in managing it, and when you join as a freshman, you don't have a choice of schedule. Seniors get the first, juniors second, then sophomore, and you get the leftovers. So here, you know, LCS has done a wonderful job, so thank you, uh, for keeping the future in mind. Three, two, three years out, when they go to college, they'll be facing the exact same thing.
All right. Dr. Brennan?
Just, and I will, uh, put, I will ask this question, and understand that if I'm out of order, I'll be corrected, but since we have Principal Flower on the line, uh, with us, and since the closing of EC Glass was just announced before this meeting, as an individual board member and as a guardian for a student at Glass, I'd be interested i- if she could explain to us and the public if it's appropriate what the plans are for teaching for these couple of days of in-person instruction that will occur at Glass.
We're actually going to get to that when we get to the next subject on the new CDC guidelines and do the COVID, um, part of that, so.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll yield into that time. Thank, thank you, Dr. Brennan. All right, very good. Well, thank you, uh, everyone. Um, our lack of communication around this is not because we're not interested, it's because the work has been done, it's clear, and we are now moving forward to the next matter, Dr. Edwards.
Okay. All right, so the next matter is the new CDC, um, guidance, which we did send out communications to our staff, to our families, um, alerting them that over the winter break, that the CDC guidance has changed, um, the quarantine and isolation time, in short, has been reduced to five days, um, with a mandatory mask requirement for the next five days, if you are asymptomatic, um, to return to work and school. Uh, we did send that information. It is also included in the board docs agenda for folks who want to actually read the VDH guidance, and I also need to remind, uh, our board and our community that schools are still under Senate Bill thirteen-oh-three, which is, um, in essence, um, keeps our schools open five days a week, except for, um, if we need to address a COVID-related issue, as we do at one of our schools. We'll talk a little bit about that once we go through this. Um, but it also says that we have to follow CDC guidance, um, and again, since CDC guidance was just recently updated, um, we updated our guidance as well as, um, the conversation regarding cloth masks, and I do know, um, we have part of our maintenance department, um, on tonight that we are ordering, and I am wearing a K-N-ninety-five mask following the guidance to say you need the, the, um, better mask, not just the cloth mask, as Mr. Glover also talked about, uh, so we are ordering those and making sure that we're going to have those available for our staff, uh, going forward, since we are still, um, aligned to CDC guidance. But I wanted to just turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Pugh and, um, Director Brown, who has been managing our- has been managing our COVID response, to talk a little bit about those guidelines. We'll talk about what the team does, and then we'll talk about Glass and the temporary shift to remote learning. Deputy Superintendent Pugh?
Thank you, Dr. Edwards and School Board. As Dr. Edwards mentioned, the updated guidelines from CDC were sent out last week to our staff and our families. They are also linked on tonight's board agenda, so that you can read those if you need to refer back to those. Specifically for symptomatic and asymptomatic, if there is a positive case, again, the first five days is in isolation. If you're then symptom-free and feeling well enough, you can certainly come back on day six, but that would be with strict mask-wearing. The same would be true for those that are unvaccinated and/or fully vaccinated, but it's been greater than six months. So I think that's something that we need to draw attention to. So if you are a close contact and are unvaccinated or a close contact and you have been fully vaccinated, which is two doses of the Pfizer and Moderna, or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, and it's been greater than six months from the last shot, then the quarantine for the first five days also applies to those close contacts. If you are a close contact and you've been fully vaccinated, which is less than six months from your last vaccine and/or you've had a booster, you will not need to be in quarantine. And so the guidelines there, the guidance there is just strict mask-wearing for 10 days while monitoring your symptoms. So I encourage everyone to look back at that, refer to that. Please call your school nurse families if you have questions. Staff, reach out to your school administrator if you have questions about the time for quarantine or end or isolation. I also just want to remind everybody that the pandemic has presented many challenges for us, for our staff, our students, as well as our families, and that receiving the COVID vaccine really is very important in protecting our students, our staff, our families, and our community, and in allowing us to keep our schools open five days a week. So booster doses of the vaccine are now available for our students who are 12 through 15 years old, and they may lessen the risk of infection from the virus. So we will continue to work with the city of Lynchburg and the Health Department to provide access to vaccines and boosters for our students and our staff as much as possible. Also want to remind the board as well as the community that we are, Lynchburg City Schools, has a free COVID-19 testing program for students and staff, and it's a partnership with the Department of Health. We encourage staff and parents to complete the consent and registration process, and I do believe that the link to that, the materials of how to complete the registration process and the consent form were also resent last week to our staff and our families. But once you complete that registration and consent process, you will be able to participate in a random weekly screenings. Those are asymptomatic screenings, and that will also allow you to gain access to the free Binax Now testing kits. If a staff or a student begins to show symptoms, we can provide them with a Binax Now testing kit to take home and do a self-test there. Director Brown, do you have anything to add regarding the COVID update and the protocols?
Good afternoon, Board. I would just like to reiterate vaccination is one of our best mitigation strategies against this pandemic and encourage families and individuals to go out and get vaccinated and receive the booster, but also to mask up. And if you have any questions about how to wear your mask or the type of mask, just to reach out to us, and we can help advise you in that as well. Lastly, I would ask if you have a sick child and if you are sick and you're an employee, to please stay at home, reach out to your medical provider, and let them make the recommendation in terms of, you know, whether or not you are sick, whether you need to be tested for COVID, and work with us as a school division because we are a community as one. We're doing our best to keep our doors open, all of our staff. Let me say that again. All of our staff are working diligently to ensure the safety of everyone on campus, and I just encourage our families to continue to work with us as we implement these new guidelines.
All right. Well, thank you. As you heard from both Deputy Superintendent Pugh and Director Brown, although it may not stop you from getting COVID, being vaccinated, getting both fully vaccinated, both doses, and boosted, may lessen the effects, also get you back to school and back to work sooner, and that's what we want. We want to try to keep our doors open as a five-days-a-week, giving excellent instruction. We want our staff healthy, we want our students healthy. If you have to miss due to sickness, by all means, we are not encouraging people who are not feeling well, who are sick, to come to work, come to school. What we are saying is that we want to keep schools open so that you can come to work, come to school during this pandemic and not have to shift into being fully remote as we were at the start of this pandemic in March 2020. So anything that we can do that will lessen the effects of this, such as getting vaccinated, getting boosted, wearing a mask, limiting social distancing, and just being safe, is going to be a great thing. You are seeing part of our COVID response team at the division level, which is Deputy Superintendent Pugh, Director Brown, Andrea Bryant is our nurse coordinator, she also helps out, Betsy Palu is our contact tracer at the division level. But a lot of the work is also done at the school level, and the school's COVID response team are the administrators, the school nurses, and almost everybody else, right? Because at some point, they're making a lot of phone calls, following up, checking in on students. It really is a full-blown team effort in terms of doing it. It even extends into our athletic program, where our athletic directors and our coaches also have a COVID monitoring response as well. So all of us are vested and involved, and that brings me to, well, how do you make a decision like you did tonight with regard to whether or not a class, a school, will shift to remote? Throughout this school year, we have been shifting classes or parts of classes, you heard the students say, some of his classes is out for quarantine. We've quarantined first-grade classes when we absolutely have to. It is not what we want to do, but at some times, we get to the point where we become staff-critical, and I've done a video about this, probably need to redo it because it's about two years old now, talking about staff and safety. Jaden praised our substitutes that are there every day. They're there every day, working very hard alongside the staff who are giving up their prep time and any other free time to help out. It is very difficult when we have high absenteeism. Some of the absenteeism is due to quarantine, positive COVID tests, some of the absenteeism is due to life, some of it may be due to the fact that daycares are closed and our staff, our families, have families themselves that they have to stay home and care for. Some of it may be if we quarantine a class within Lynchburg City Schools, a lot of our staff have students in our very own schools, and they have to take care of their children. So there are multiple reasons. We typically start looking at when we approach about 30% of our staff being out. And, you know, at EC Glass, it's been since the start of coming back in the new year, we've been keeping an eye on it. They hit staff-critical today, and we're really looking at the safety of bringing everybody in. And for that reason, we've decided that we will go remote learning for just a couple days, not till the end of the year. That was the rumor yesterday that we were shutting down until the end of the year, but that's not true, just for a couple days. So we have a combination of critical staff, as well as we still have a lot of COVID calls that have come into the school that we are still contact tracing and finding out information for. So we have some unknowns out there in terms of folks, particularly if they report it today. We probably didn't get a chance to get a call back, find out everybody who they might have been a close contact with to follow through. And I'm looking at Dr. Brennan, but it's my understanding that this is much more contagious, which would explain the higher call volume from folks, particularly coming back from the holiday break. So it is for three days until Friday, the staff, COVID response team, along with the school staff. So right before the board meeting, in addition to the division staff and the school administrative staff, we also had our transportation staff on, our food, school nutrition staff on, because when we shift to remote, it is a full service as to what we're going to do. So we will be providing meals for pickup, and I'll let them talk a little bit more about that. But I just wanted to reassure the community that we don't make those decisions, we don't take them lightly, and it's a very difficult decision to make, but we do have to balance out the safety of the students, the staffing, our ability to safely monitor kids all day long and just to get through it. Our hope is to get back to school. So on Friday, we will reconvene COVID response team, both district and school, to look at the weekend, because we recognize that there are activities and events that are occurring over the weekend, as well as what does Tuesday look like since we have Monday, the Martin Luther King holiday. So again, I will turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Pugh and Director Brown to fill in some details about that, and then we can have Ms. Flor close it out with anything specific for the school EC Glass.
Again, Dr. Edwards, again, as Dr. Edwards said, we met today with the staff, administrative staff at EC Glass, discussed the number of staff and students that have been impacted by COVID. Again, we have to look at the staff that we have in the building. Do we have enough staff to cover? Is it staff-critical? We are looking, again, at the number of positive cases and quarantines that we have in terms of the spread in the building, and so together, we made the decision that it really was in the best interest of our students and our staff and our families, as well as our community, to shift EC Glass High School to remote learning for the next three days. That does include athletics and activities starting tomorrow. As Dr. Edwards mentioned, the staff will, we will reconvene on Friday to reassess and look at some of the numbers, the calls that have been coming in to the school nurse and to the school administration over the next three days, and reassess the possibility of resuming activities and athletics over the weekend, and we'll communicate that decision with our families on Friday by the end of the day, probably by no later than 6:00 PM on Friday, whether athletics and activities will resume for the weekend. That information will be coming from school personnel. As Dr. Edwards said, we'll communicate throughout the weekend, and then we'll reconvene on Monday and look at our staff numbers and see if we have enough staff to cover, to safely cover and provide instruction and supervision for our students to return on Tuesday, as Monday is a holiday for students and staff. So I will let Dr. Latonya Brown and Ms. Flor speak and add anything else that you need to, you feel is critical for your families and the community to know.
Now, we'll go to Ms. Flor, because we had a staff meeting where her staff and her team answered questions that they had. So Ms. Flor, do you have anything else to follow up?
Just a couple of points. I do want to thank publicly my faculty and staff. They have been amazing and jumped in and helped out whenever they could. Of course, Jill Wood, our nurse, and everyone that has helped with the things. And I also want to thank you all, our COVID response team, division COVID response team. I do want to stress that a very detailed email and communication came from me. And students, we do expect you to Zoom. There is a schedule that's included in that. This is only for three days, so when I walk around to teachers' classrooms tomorrow, I expect to see people on Zooms involved in instruction. Tomorrow is technically an early dismissal day, so we're going to follow that schedule so that our students who have GovSchool, STEM, anything like that can follow along with that schedule. But we want students and expect students to be involved in instruction, and we will be taking attendance. And this is only, we hope, through Friday, and that is what I wanted to stress. So all information that anyone should need is in that communication, and certainly reach out to your teachers if you have any questions as well.
I do want to also stress that in that communication that Principal Flor just referenced, breakfast and lunch will be available to students through the curbside pickup, which we've done in the past, at the auditorium entrance at EC Glass from 11:00 to 1:00 on Wednesday and again on Friday. Some students may have left their Chromebooks and their technology at the school today when they went home. Hopefully, they all took them home with them, but if you are a student and you don't have your Chromebook, you may go to the auditorium side entrance again and check in with an EC Glass staff member, and they will give you further instructions as how to access your Chromebook. We also recognize that some of our families and students don't have access to the internet at home, and so the IT department will be available tomorrow between the hours of 11:00 and 1:00, the same time that the meal distribution is taking place outside the auditorium, to check out MiFi hotspots to those students who may need them. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Again, all of this information is in the communication that came from Ms. Flor and her team, as well as that went to the community from the communications team.
Okay. Are there, I think you guys have some questions or?
All right. Before we entertain the questions, again, thank you, staff, for getting right to the point on this matter. The board is aware that previously board governance, that the board would only intervene with a division-wide matter, and so this is certainly within the purview of our staff, and we appreciate what they've done. And I think we can be most helpful with pertinent, direct questions at this time. Dr. Gupta?
I have a couple of concerns. You know, last time when we went for Wednesday off, you know, we decided on a Tuesday, the school board meeting, remember, and when we went allowing Wednesday off. Now we are closing the school tomorrow, and the announcement comes this afternoon to the parents. So was there no telltale signs earlier to make an 11th-hour decision? I have a few questions. If I, you want me to go through all of this?
Let me distill the telltale signs of that. COVID numbers come in each day. Substitutes also sign up each day. Callouts happen each day. So I will tell you, our principals start today thinking, okay, I'm going to be covered, and then maybe not so much because something else has happened. So we do monitor it to look at, are we getting close to those numbers? And today, we actually, that was, today was the day that we really did get close to this is staff-critical. As far as saying, hey, on Monday, let's predict that Friday we might be closed, we try not to do that, and that is a school's thought. We could just say, it looks bad, it's trending bad, so let's go ahead and make the call now, and then if Friday, it's not bad, we've already put in place that we're going to go remote. Our goal is to try to keep schools open. So we do apologize to families for the late call. It really is what's happening before we do the call is we're calling every sub, checking with every person, trying to return as many of those COVID calls as possible to see who is going to be available in the building, as well as deploying staff from the central office and other locations.
Because the problem is, I received an email from administration about COVID dashboard this afternoon, and there was no indication of EC Glass being about to go remote in that email. Was something triggered between that email?
No, no, no. The COVID dashboard that you received is the one that I send to you every single week from the VDH. I send it to the school board. It is the one that they do for schools. It comes out on Monday afternoon, and generally, I either send it on Monday or Tuesday. So those are two separate things. You would have received that COVID dashboard anyhow. That is community spread. That's not school, so that's what's going on in the Lynchburg City community. What we do, what we did today was, we talked about what's happening in our schools and with our staff.
And how does it align with the Senate bill, which requires five days of instruction?
How does?
Does it, do we violate that bill, the law?
So the bill says the default is five days of instruction. That's what we have, default to five days of instruction. And you may shift to remote learning to mitigate the effects of COVID. And I think originally it was if you had a lot of positive cases or quarantine cases, but now we're seeing that the, between the worker shortage and the callouts and having not have people in the building and being understaffed, that that is causing a supervision issue. We, before, we had this concern with Heritage Elementary School last December 2020, I think. We had to shift Heritage Elementary School. Elementary School. We shifted Lincoln Elementary School earlier this year. We shifted Sheffield earlier this year. Those schools were shifted for two days, um, for remote learning. And even last year, we ended up shifting the entire division because the transportation department was so significantly impacted. So the default is to go for the least amount of shift possible.
You have another question, Dr. Gupta? Thank you for those questions. Anyone else with a, Dr. Brennan?
I want to thank the administration and the staff and the principals of the schools for, for dealing with this amazing situation, which I'm sure is so challenging. The, the hospital is not allowed to say that they're in a crisis state because there's, uh, implications about closing the hospital that occurs, but they clearly are in a crisis state. I think as of Monday, they had so many patients in the emergency room, they had three beds of their 53 beds that they could actually see patients who are not COVID patients. And we all know the numbers in the hospitals have gone up, although this is, this is an infectious virus and theoretically not as serious as other variants. We know that because of the numbers, there are a lot of people infected. So I'd say the hospital is in crisis and the schools are in crisis, and those who are dealing with it every day, we really appreciate it. And thank you for this excellent presentation of where things stand. Um, I also want to thank the staff who have gotten vaccinated. You know, unfortunately, we still end up with a very low percentage of individuals in the community who are vaccinated by our staff. I think last time we heard was in the 70 to 80% range of being vaccinated. So thank you all for doing that. That clearly is helping us a lot. Um, there are other mitigation areas that have been commented on, and mask, or one which Dr. Edwards has commented on, and I think that maybe someone's going to tell us about mass supply. I'd also be interested in hearing maybe as part of that about ventilation, because that also is a very important piece in what we have done proactively, or do we still need to do regarding ventilation. Um, and then I have a, a few questions that I have and, and that families have raised to me about the new policy that I like to state, and perhaps that the COVID response team can get back in some type of a message to the community, not necessarily answer these tonight. But, but one of the ones that people are concerned about is the lunchtime guidelines in the policy, because i- it states that, um, if an individual who has had COVID, as we know, can come back in five days wearing a mask, but obviously at lunchtime, they, they're not wearing the mask. And if someone's within six feet of that person at lunchtime, and that person turns positive, then all individuals around them are considered to be contacts also. And that seems to be somewhat of a risky situation, and I appreciate hearing how that can be addressed. But may I go down my list if that's okay, and see which ones you want to answer and some you might want to postpone. Um, uh, the other thing is that VDH guidelines, which we have seen, suggest that a student who has been exposed should be tested on day five. That not only should they come out of, they can come out of, uh, quarantine at day five and remain masked thereafter, but they suggest that they should be tested. This again is for exposure, not for someone who's infected. We do not need to test someone who's been infected, but for exposure. And I don't know whether that can tie into our Vista program as far as a way to use those tests for those students if it's felt to be appropriate. Um, the other one, this comes from providers in the towns, because obviously the hospital is overwhelmed and providers are overwhelmed. In the section for athletes, it says there needs to be a signed return to play form to get back, from the medical provider, to get back into athletics. The providers are concerned because they are overwhelmed with this situation also. And not only is that a concern, but their other concern is that, and, and perhaps someone can clarify for this, for this also, that some, uh, some schools will state that if you do a home test, which is positive, you need a confirmatory PCR done in a physician's office to document that. And that in this day and age is also terrible for providers' offices. I mean, I think at this stage of COVID, we can say that if you have a rapid test, which is positive, you have rapid test, you don't need to go and have another test done. Also, we know that the testing is so difficult to find. Um, so those are my main questions. I would also say that, as has been said about how important the vaccine is, that I hope that the Lynchburg City schools will think about partnering with the health department, perhaps to do some vaccine clinics, maybe at a site, maybe once a week for staff, students, families to be vaccinated. And I hope it'll help that as far as the rapid response team, that the health department is part of that, uh, in some way by communication. I think in our original return to learn, we said that the health department was going to be our, our partner, who we look to, to, how to deal with this. And I particularly think, you know, the, the $64,000 question is, this is going to continue for several more weeks at least. Do we get to the point, in the view of the health department, that we need to close the schools like we closed the schools for terrible flu epidemics, where we got to close it to stop it? So that issue is hopefully one that'd be way down the line, but I certainly would appreciate their input. So, once again, thank you to the staff, thank you to the teachers, thank you to the students who are working so hard to keep everyone safe. The schools are in crisis, but I really think that as we've done in the past, we're doing the best we can to keep everyone safe, and I, as one board member, certainly appreciate it.
I'll respond to what I can. Uh, Dr. Brennan, in terms of the VDH being part of our rapid response team, that was not mentioned, but we absolutely are in communication with them on a daily basis. Um, Director Brown and her team, um, are communicating with them when we have, uh, questions about, uh, contact tracing, or close contact, or exposure, or quarantine, or isolation, we are in communication with them, and they provide guidance to us on a daily basis. So we did admit that, um, they may not be formally sitting on that team as we have those conversations, but we do consult with them, uh, for guidance and input on a daily basis. Um, Director Brown, I am not sure, um, on the rapid test followed by an additional test, um, I don't know that we have recommended that.
No, we have not. Um, at this time, we have allowed the students to come back after day five showing, um, no symptoms or waning of symptoms, um, as per the CDC guidelines. In terms of mandating, um, testing, we as a school division at this time, due to the shortage of the test, um, have not done that, um, and was not advised to do that as we consulted with VDH. But as we're going through these new guidelines, this is something that we can come back and look at. Uh, we've also, um, looked at the test to stay program, um, and I vetted that out with the principals to get their information, I mean, excuse me, their feedback in regards to that, um, and their input, um, in regards to that, because the implications of that would be, um, based upon school board's recommendations and creating policies as well. Um, coming back from the break, our focus has been to create a safe, um, environment for our schools and to keep our doors open. So we do collaborate almost daily with, um, VDH, and they do review, um, our correspondences that we do send out and give us input as well. And they also work with us on flyers and communications that we do send out and participate in our meetings as we meet with our testing agency, um, AAGES, um, who does our Vista testing, um, as well. So when we talk about collaboration with VDH, it's very, um, heavy. Um, and we've also invited in, um, a board member as well to give input, and members of the health advisory committee, um, to sue some of our meetings as needed, um, as well. So the home test, we have been accepting, um, especially right now due to the staff, um, excuse me, the shortages of test, um, and the school nurses have been doing that on a case-by-case scenario. In regards to athletes, um, at the school level, and I would check back, um, with the athletic directors, um, it was across the board in order for the athletes to come back at that time when COVID onset due to some of the respiratory and cardiac issues, um, at one point that they had to have a return to play signed off on. And when we talked to athletic directors and teams, they recommended that they return to play after 10 days. Um, that's a conversation that we can take back to the team and have a, um, a conversation again for the safety of our students. So we can take that back again and have discussion, um, and bring that information back to the board. Um, in regards to lunchtime, um, the CDC policy uses the word ideally, um, when we're talking about the six feet social distancing, uh, within that. Um, that being said, we have highly encouraged and recommended to all of our, um, administrative staff, um, to separate the students that have come back off of quarantine, um, or isolation on day six, and to seat them separately from everyone else. We are working with the schools to help implement that. Um, as we know, reached out to VDH, no one really considered the lunchroom, um, or cafeteria. When having some conversations in that, um, that is a stretch for us as a division, and we will work with each school individually, um, to assist and help with that, uh, to separate the students. So we mitigate the spread, uh, or the exposure of new students, um, as we facilitate the lunches in the cafeteria. So they might have a designated room, designated area in which those students will be asked to sit. Uh, we communicated that in a newsletter, email last week to the parents, um, as well.
Thank you both, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Brennan. You had a follow-up, Dr. Brennan?
So just one follow-up. Thank you all very much for the, for the answers, and thank you for being so thorough. And this is not need responded to now, but also the question about testing at day five for someone who's coming back who has been exposed, if you could just look at that at some point. And then lastly, can, can the administration look into some way to communicate these points to families and the communities? I mean, I think this, this whole topic is obviously very important, and I think requires some type of a mechanism, whether it's the new video message that was done yesterday, or a town hall meeting, some way that people can be reassured that we really are doing the best we can, which I know you are doing the best you can. But for them to understand and have their questions answered, I think would help with a lot of the concerns that are out there for parents and for their children. Thank you so much.
So noted, so noted, Dr. Brennan, uh, Claire Cassette as well. Uh, Dr. Carter?
My concern is, we're talking about the lunchroom, but what about the buses? When a student gets on a bus, look how crowded those, those, yeah, the masks, but it's.
Yeah. But it's been that way all year.
Yeah. It has been that way all year. The concern with lunch is that the student can't eat with a mask on. So that if they're sitting close, they have to take the mask down. And so, uh, uh, the, the bus certainly is a concern, and it's been a concern all year, but the, the, the lunch is more so the concern because the student has to, to pull down the mask. And in the past, you, they've returned after day 10, uh, sometimes after day 14. And so this is just a shorter period of time, and they're recommending that the mask be worn, um, very strictly. And so we're working the, as, with our, with our, uh, principals and, and school administrators to, to make sure that we have plans in place to, as much as possible, make sure that our students that are returning, um, are as, as far away as possible during the lunch period.
So are we discouraging, reiterating? Um, this is new. So coming in, um, trying to implement some of these things without specific CDC or VDH guidance, we are watching our numbers. We are watching for inner spread, whether it's the bus, the classroom, the cafeterias, and we are watching that daily, um, as a school, as a team, um, to see if we have, um, specific patterns that we're looking at and foddering, um, to also give that information to VDH, um, to assist us in making the best decision and recommendations in regards to health mitigations. Um, I, I would just ask the board to give us a little time, uh, because we had very few guidance, um, to work with, and we're trying to work this out, um, as a school division, working it out through our principals, and we're doing it day by day.
All right. That, thank you. Thank you, Director Brown. All right. Uh, Dr. Gupta, what you wanted to say?
I just wanted to say that VDH, I got my booster shot on Heritage High School parking lot. The VDH had a van parked there. All the young men of LCS students were getting vaccines. So I saw the collaboration.
Yes, sir. And so we, we do have dates, and I, and I apologize. We've been working diligently. Um, every single elementary school will have a booster date in which we're vaccinating any school provide, I mean, excuse me, any employee on that site and the students as well, uh, for the vaccination or for the booster. And, um, I'm going to have to work, um, with the administration and leadership team to give, get out other dates. Uh, we do have three community dates that are coming up, and one of them is Monday. Um, and I apologize, I haven't been able to get that to Ms. Reeves yet. Uh, we will be running a vaccination from, um, 12 o'clock to 2:00 at the EC glass high school on the auditorium side, uh, for boosters or vaccinations, uh, from anyone five and up as well. So we will be getting that information out to the community. We have a lot of clinics going, um, and opportunities for students and staff, uh, to get vaccinated along with their loved ones, because we've opened it up to community members as well.
Dr. Carter?
Well, two things. One is, uh, I know, Dr. Edwards, in the past, we had to work with VDH to, whenever we had to close a school. So we're still doing that. Okay. Because it seems like we're not work, I don't know what the conversation is, but I know we are working with VDH and have been continually. And I just heard about the communication, but I heard the, um, administrators say that they're communicating these issues and these concerns, and how have they communicated, communicated this to families?
Well, each school has a newsletter. So some of you are on the various newsletters for individual schools, but if you're not connected to that school, you might not get that newsletter. Or, and I do have to say, different folks like different modalities of communication. Some people like the printed, very detailed reads. Some people won't read that. They want a short and sweet. So in our division, in our schools, we have everything from, you know, the, the, the newsletters that go home. Some of them are class dojos that, um, I know Heritage Elementary uses that, and it's very informative. Uh, Sandusky Middle School does a Sunday night message, um, to families that comes across through, you know, you can get a phone call, a text message, uh, various ways of doing it. And what we're starting to learn is that same message multiple ways. Um, and that might not be your flavor. You may not want to be the one to say, send me the eight-page document with all the details. We're trying not to just limit it to one way of communicating. So you may have noticed that when we did the message. It's, um, some folks are saying, just give it to be short and sweet. Tell us what we need to know. Why aren't you talking about what we talk about? And, and just give us the direction. And that's what that's intended for, while others actually want to read every line in the VDH document. And we're trying to be respectful of folks and say, what do you need to know? Um, and then how much of that do you need to know? And just pick your flavor in terms of what you want. So, a- and again, um, the clinics that are happening, and I was going to mention the MLK Day, and please don't park on the auditorium side, the Langhorn side of Glass, because we are doing a clinic that's coming up. Um, so it's coming out multiple, multiple ways of doing it.
So what's the best way for someone that doesn't have a child in the school system to hear? To go on the LCS website, or?
That's what we're starting to do, because, um, some of the things we're just coming home to, again, if you're at Glass, you've got the Glass notification, but not necessarily if, if you don't have a child at Glass. So we're trying to do more communications that are available on our website. We also recognize that people don't go to our website. Um, there's some research on website traffic. We have things on YouTube, because we have folks that like to look at video messages versus text messages versus different, different things. So right now, the la- the latest messages will be posted on our website if you don't have, if you're not connected to a school right now.
And just one more question. Since the, uh, we're talking about masks on the school buses, are we discouraging students from eating and drinking while they're riding on the bus?
For the most part, yeah. We've been doing that. Keep your mask on, because that was originally the first round of three feet or less.
All right. I am ver- I am very impressed with the way board members are, are getting right into it with well-thought-through, uh, questions and thoughts. But we don't want to leave anybody out who hasn't had a chance to, to raise any questions or concerns around this matter. And, uh, we certainly want to thank staff for, uh, getting us there. We can clearly see that we are all working as hard as we can, uh, to deal with these matters and, uh, taking in all of the suggestions, so that we can give this same message multiple ways. And I'm very proud of that. All right. Uh, Dr. Edwards, I think that we have reached the end of that, and we can now deal with the early release time.
Okay. So early release time, that is the two-hour early release that students have. And the goal of that was to provide just a small amount of time for staff to catch up, do some prep time, um, since they are covering classes, helping with contact tracing, um, and dealing with, um, even some, some shortages that aren't related to COVID. Uh, and we put that in place for about a six-week period, and we said that we would revisit it in January. Um, and I feel like this is deja vu when we were. And I feel like this is deja vu when we were in June being hopeful that life would look different when school started and then we had Delta. We worked our way through Delta, came up with some things and thinking life would look different. Now we have Omicron. So where we were hopeful that, hey, we are probably going to get attendance under control because we're expecting this to go down. Now we're seeing a more contagious version of it, which is still impacting our attendance. So the thing that I would like the school board to consider tonight is to continue the early release, which is on Wednesday. It's a two-hour early dismissal for students. Staff stay for another six-week period, which would take us through, tomorrow's already an early release day, January 12th. But it would take us through the two Wednesdays in January, the 19th and the 25th, and the four Wednesdays in February. And why February? Well, from what I'm hearing, and Dr. Brennan, you can weigh in, on February seems to be the time that we think this thing is going to peak, this allow a little bit in February. So I'm hopeful that we'll have the attendance absenteeism under control a little bit better so that we are not utilizing our staff as much as we are currently in terms to cover class as well as utilizing non-school staff, division staff to also go over and cover class. So my recommendation is for the board to consider extending the early release, the Wednesday early release from January 19th up until February 22nd.
All right, Governor's Team, you've heard a consideration from the superintendent that has reflected some thought around why we're doing this and continuing it for this period of time. Is there any discussion or if someone would like to entertain a motion at this time? Well, I would be willing to entertain a motion around the recommendation.
I have a question.
Question by Ms. Morrison.
Have we had any feedback from staff or principals or families about, has this been helpful? Has it been, how has it impacted their ability to prepare for classes? And I know losing your prep time, it's really hard when you're covering classes from early in the morning till the end of the day. And you're exactly right, so much more work is done outside of school, but that little bit of prep time really helps. And so have we had any kind of feedback?
The feedback has been positive to the point where, this is why I'm sitting here recommending, because it really is coming from the staff. Can we just continue this for a little bit longer and see where we are? The extra time does help. And I want you to think, you know, while we're talking preparation for class, there is a lot that you can do at home, but there is also some stuff that you can do in your room where all your resources are right there. And the thing that they probably don't have at home is a copy machine if they needed it or things like that. So having that time that's guaranteed on a Wednesday, something to look forward to. You know you're not going to have to cover class, has been helpful. It's a small amount of time for staff, but it is being used properly.
What is the pleasure of the board? Dr. Brennan?
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the early release time for an additional six weeks for staff to have time to prepare for their curric, for their classes.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Tros, are you going to second?
I second it.
The motion has been made by Dr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Tros, that we would continue our early release time to end on February the 22nd. At that time, there be further consideration if necessary. Any questions? Dr. Gupta?
I will not support this motion because to me, we are going virtual. You know, on top of that, when they're meeting face-to-face, we're reducing it by another two hours of an opportunity for them to interact with their teachers and interact with their peers. It doesn't make sense to extend it this time.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey?
I too will be voting against this motion. In my talking with different teachers, talked a total of 14, three of which said that it was somewhat helpful and the remaining 11 said not helpful at all. So.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any further discussion on this motion? Uh, Mr. Tros?
With respect to Mr. Harvey, the people that have reached out to me concerning the early release have been overwhelmingly, in fact, I think all positive. Of course, I'm very mindful of the health, of the childcare issues, but I think we're in a crisis mode here. And I've heard overwhelming positive response from not only the staff, but also the children. It's just that they recognize that the teachers need to break and planning and it's been a positive response. So.
Thank you, Mr. Tros. If there are no further questions or discussion on the motion, we ask the clerk to please call a roll. If you say yes, you're voting in favor of extending the release to February the 22nd. If you say no, that the early release time will expire and there will be no more early release time. Madam Clerk?
Scoop up, Mama Tros.
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Nellis.
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Scoop up, Mama Dr. Gupta.
No.
Scoop up, Mama Mr. Harvey.
No.
Motion carries seven to two.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Our board, you've been doing so well. And we only have the instruction and program piece within our new business, but it might be a good idea to take a two or three-minute breather after what we've just discussed and then be fresh and move on. So if it, okay with the board, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you all for that necessary time for this board. And now we will continue in Section I with I-2, Instruction and Program Policy Review. And board, this is before us tonight for action. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. So these were discussed at the December work session. There were some questions and I know that Deputy Superintendent Pugh and Director Brown are going to address some of the questions, some of the things we sent home. But we'll kind of go over it, but it is up for action tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Pugh.
Thank you so much, Dr. Edwards. So as we talked about last time, we are recommending that some policies that were not VSBA policies, that were the lettered policies, student uniforms, the accident and dental insurance, the fee schedule and the school attendance area policy, we recommend deletion for those. Particular attention to student uniforms in our discussion, I believe, at the school board meeting and then after that, Bass Elementary School does, is the only school in the division that does have school uniforms. In speaking with Dr. Edwards as well as the principal, Monica Hendricks, we still recommend that we delete the policy and the regulation as Monica includes this in her student and parent handbook. And she can send this information home to inform them of the practice of student uniforms at Bass. So we will continue to recommend the deletion of that policy as well. There was some question around the school attendance areas and the recommended regulation that we are, the regulation that we're recommending to delete R-7-12 specifically lists the streets in those school attendance areas. And there was some question and concern about the board being the only governing body being able to determine the school attendance areas and zones. So I want to thank Barbara Saunders for looking for these. And we currently have a policy as well as a regulation that speak to school attendance areas. And in that, it discusses, if you'll note, that the school board is the only governing body that has the authority to change school zones. So again, we're still recommending the deletion of R-7-12. The updates, again, we sent some updates to the student and evaluation, student evaluation and grading procedures before the winter break. There were a lot of questions that Director Brown nor I could answer at the time. We spent some time before the break working with the school counseling directors, both at Heritage High School and EC Glass High School, getting a better understanding. And we changed some additional wording in this policy so that we hope it's better, more understandable to the board as well as to our staff and students and our community in terms of what we're asking students to do in terms of student evaluation, grading procedures, as well as participation in exams. So again, we're asking that you approve these, those two for update and the other five for deletion. And I'll take questions.
No standing like, understanding that we understand. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, the only question that I had was regarding the student course load. And just a clarification on A, it's especially with the announcement that we've just had that we're going to go to the block schedule, does A still apply? Or does that require any modification?
That still applies and I don't believe it requires any modification. They, are you talking about being able to take an additional course during the eighth period?
Yeah, it just, I see that it says six credit-bearing courses and must elect to carry another approved course or a repeat course in the seventh period. And I understand that we have eight periods.
Correct. Well, we currently have eighth period in the AB block now. And that eighth period, and even though it's called eighth period, it's might fall in a student's schedule in period two or on an A day or in period six on a B day. But during that eighth period, the student is participating either in some enrichment or some credit recovery classes, those types of things. So that is the course that they have the opportunity. They had, they take six courses and then they have the opportunity, they must take that seventh course as the elective. The eighth period then is that enrichment or the other activities that are at Heritage High School and EC Glass. What we're proposing for next year is that during that, what we're calling either enrichment, and I believe, I'm not sure what it's called at EC Glass, that students would be able to take an additional elective. It's not required, but they would be able to if they choose so and are in good standing and it's recommended by the guidance counselor. So this policy would be okay as it stands.
Harvey? If I could just follow up. So let's say that I have a student who is in ninth grade, who is, we have eight periods. They could conceivably take six credit courses and one elective. And could they leave early for that eighth period?
No, no, they may not.
Where I'm kind of confused, how, how do we address that they are in school, specifically in ninth and 10th grade, that they are in school for eight courses? Because it says seven here.
I'll have to go back and look at the wording on that. But currently, this policy as it stands has been here this year. And we have eight periods. But I'll have to go back and talk to the counselors to see if we specifically need to change the language. But as I understand it, students, it's, students, seniors are the only ones, if they have enough credits and are on track to graduate, seniors are the only ones that have a dismissal before the eighth period of the day. So I will certainly follow up with both the high school counseling directors to see if this needs to be changed. So if we'd like to table this and not approve this one, I can certainly bring it back.
And of course, that will be the pleasure of the board, but I would not want us to vote on anything that the language is not correct.
I agree.
Okay, we can, we can remove this one and I'll... Okay, we can remove this one, and I'll bring it back next time.
So we're removing that, if it is the sentiment of the board, and we will be voting tonight only on the others that remain. Any further questions? Mr. Tross?
I have a question. I just need maybe a little clarification concerning policy IKC dash RZ. Now, and it's specifically the senior exam exemptions. We discussed this, and I'll give everybody a moment to get to that. So E, senior exam exemptions, clause number seven. It's concerning a student in the AP placement course. I want to make sure I understand this. So with respect to, it says a student, who, students who do not take the AP exam must sit for the corresponding course final exam. As noted in the program of studies, students who do not take the AP exam for their corresponding course will only receive a 4.5 rather than a 5.0 quality point. I just want to make sure that, so they must sit for the AP exam, or they must sit for their final exam if they don't take the AP class. But they, I guess they don't have to, and that's implicit in this description? If they sit for the AP exam, they are exempt from the final exam if they want, and is that a teacher call?
That, that, they, if they, if they take the AP exam, they don't have to sit for the final course exam, and it's stated. So the AP exam itself, that's given in May, sits for and stands for the course, the final course exam, which the teacher would create and give. So if I take the AP exam, I don't have to take the end-of-course exam that's given by the teacher. If I want to receive, and there was a question, and this has been, we took the wording from the program of studies in an attempt to make it more clear when reading the policy, versus having to go to the program of studies to refer to this. This has been the practice for many years. Students who participate in advanced placement courses and take the AP exam, if they would like to receive the quality point of 5.0. So if I'm in an AP course, and I want the weighted 5.0 quality point as to count in my GPA, I must sit and participate in the formal and official AP exam. If I choose not to sit in the AP exam, they have to sit for the corresponding course final exam, which is given by the teacher. But it, that final course exam is not a 5.0 quality point, it is a 4.5 quality point. So we, that has always been in the program of studies, and we wanted to make that clear in the policy.
Mr. Tross, if you go down to F.
Right.
And it says on the next page, a student in advanced placement course will take the AP exam in order to receive a quality point of five.
Right. I just want to make sure it's somewhere, it's understood that if you take the AP exam, you don't have to take the course final exam. And I understand that to be the policy, I just want to make sure this is communicated here. And if it's communicated elsewhere, I'm good with it. I just thought, I want to make sure it's all.
Is Mr. Tross's consideration accurate with what we have?
Yeah, I think, going back to what he said, the way it's written is, if you don't sit for the AP exam, you have to take the final exam. What you're saying is, if you sit for the AP exam, you don't have to take the final exam. It's almost like a geometry question, is the correlation?
Right, is there a correlation there, and I don't see the parallel, the correlation. And I mean, if it's somewhere else, whatever, I'm very explicit, because if it's not explicit, it's open to interpretation. And when you start opening things to interpretation, it gets to be a problem.
Chair recognizes Dr. Nellis.
You can take the AP exam and take the final exam.
Yes.
And so I appreciate what he's saying, and just, you know, you're trying to make it clear, but it's leaving this, yeah, you can still take the final exam. I guess if you want to bring your grade up, and just make that explicit, as opposed to just understood.
And I think to make that explicit, we can leave in the red-stricken words and have the option of being exempt from the final exam regardless of the grade in the course, or have the option of taking the exam. We can certainly work on the wording there to make it clear that you have the option. If you choose not to take the AP exam, you must take the final course exam that's given by the teacher. But if you choose to take the AP exam, you certainly could take the final course exam. So we can work on changing the language for that.
Harvey?
I took this as D basically says, thou shall take an exam. And E is an exemption, which therefore then says, if you take the AP exam, you're not required to take the exam. I think, for me, the way the rewording is placed is, what's in green simply says, if you don't take the AP exam, you're, you don't get the exemption. You have to take the regular exam, and it's only weighted at 4.5 in lieu of 5. So I think the wording that Mr. Tross might be looking for is, I think you have to look at both D and E together, because E is an exemption to D. And the only reason I say that is because this is written like the building code.
And I agree with you, except for the fact that it says, there will be one exam at the end of the course, but you can take two, right? I mean, you can take the AP and the final.
I would understand.
And if I'm beating a dead horse, stop me, I'm good with that. But I just, I like things exactly explicit, because then there's no room for interpretation. And if you tell them, hey, if you include, as Ms. Pugh said, and have the option of being exempt from the final exam, that's, I mean, it's clear.
Mr. Tross, you are one member of this board, and each board member has equal value. So this is a concern to all of us. Are we ready to approve these policies tonight? This is the second concern that I've seen with the language tonight.
I'm good with the others, I just, I just.
This one, I think, yes. We can take that.
Yeah, I'm gonna suggest that those two that are listed under the LCS update, we don't take a vote on tonight. We'll go back and look at those in particular. IC slash ID dash RZ, look at number A and the implications of the eighth period in an AB block schedule. And then looking at the AP and end-of-course exam, and rewarding that and working on a better explanation of what you are required to do and what you have the option to do.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pugh. Is there any other considerations that you all would like to be removed from tonight's vote on these said policies? Is there anything else that needs to be removed? If we do it that way, then we won't have to laboriously deal with the non-debatable motion to lay on the table as such. Is there anything else?
Well, I had a question on the school attendance zones. Surprise. I see that, that policy JC defines that the school board sets the attendance zones and can change the school zones. But we don't have a policy or regulation that says, this is what the school board decided. There's a, what, a map on the website? You know, if that represented a document that we had approved, you know, that's where my heartburn is about this policy. You know, the previous, the original letter policy, at least it's defined, it's written like a property, property zone definition, which, okay, that's kind of what it needs to be. And I'm very uncomfortable with having our attendance zones defined, which is what they are right now, or would be defined by the website, without a specific
Approval.
document that we, that the school board has approved.
Could the map be the document, or you want like?
I, I don't know, it's, I like the existing policy, because it's, I mean, it's pretty terrible to try to drill through, but, I mean, at least it's, I think it stands legally. And I just don't know what the status of having the website saying, this is what the attendance zones are. And maybe our attorney can weigh in, but I just would, I'd like to have something formal.
This is Hocktown speaking. I was going to say, perhaps you can have your clerk look through past minutes and determine when the boundaries were established. They may be within the past minutes of the school board.
Thank you, Attorney Towns, before we get to Mr. Harvey. This is a master board in action, so I don't think we're ready for that either. We need to deal with that at a later point. Mr. Harvey?
I guess, I hear exactly what Dr. Nellis is saying. I guess my, my question would be, specifically, we are deleting this because my understanding was that this document specifically spelled out the areas, but those areas might have changed. Is that correct? Because if, if not, I don't understand the rationale of why we need to delete this policy. And that, that I believe is what Mr., what Dr. Nellis is saying.
It's a regulation, and we're recommending deletion, because we would have to make sure that these are, which we certainly can do, that we look at these school attendance areas that are in this regulation at least once a year, if not more often, if things are changed. So I think that was the reason, is that it just defines those, and it certainly can be useful. I think if someone's looking for that. But it's not really a policy around the ability to change the attendance zones and some of the other regulations that are listed in the other two policies and regulations. So whatever the pleasure of the board is, we certainly can leave R seven dash twelve, if that's the pleasure of the board, as an active regulation. And we'll just need to make note that we need to check those on a yearly basis and make, look at, especially this year, to see when they were last updated.
Dr. Nellis, follow up?
Well, I was gonna say, you could just take R seven dash twelve and turn it into JC R seven Omicron. And just to have, just basically map that all the way, you know, just copy that, that policy into a, into a new regulation. And I, why would that need to be reviewed every year? Because we don't, we don't do that now.
Potentially this year, really this year with a fine-tooth comb, because we need to see when it was last updated. Which, you're right, once it's updated, unless the board makes a change in school attendance areas, we would not need to review that every year.
Dr. Gupta?
And I, I'm willing to take what's currently there in R seven dash twelve and add it to the regulation of JC dash RZ as, you know, additional information that's on that regulation.
Let's, let's stay together. And again, if we're doing things like that, it has been, in the past, board members have liked to see it and look at it. And again, if you don't want to do that tonight, I'm fine with it. I know Dr. Gupta wants to speak, and then Dr. Edwards.
I thought there was a motion on the floor to approve this. Now, I've taken, seen so many passengers being taken off the bus, move here and there. So I'm confused, and I'm not comfortable voting on it.
Very good, Dr. Gupta, but at present, there is.
I don't know what's taken out, what's taken in. I got a low.
I understand, that's what I was just saying, I understand. But I do want you to know, as of right now, there is no motion on the floor. We have just been entertaining the realities of a potential action item for tonight, but we haven't moved to a motion yet. And I would concur, I like to look at what I'm dealing with. And we're making considerable adjustments here. Dr. Edwards?
I just, and knowing that we have new board members within the last couple of years since I've been sitting superintendent. But prior to my arrival about five years ago, I think the board started a conversion. So remember, all of our policies were P followed by numbers, R followed by numbers. And since then, and they were sections, we have taken all of those to convert them to VSBA policies. So the first and foremost, our practice of reading an old numbered policy and then trying to find the identical VSBA version. Either the VSBA version covers it, or we modify it to include pieces. But our goal is to get rid of the numbered policies. So to Dr. Nellis's point, if we're going to make or keep parts of the attendance zone, attendance area, I do recommend that we retool the VSBA policy. Put it, it's already got an RZ, which the Z is meaning we modified it. So that when you look at our policy table of contents, you have A, B, C, D, and everything is lined up correctly. So I'm willing to go back and do that. But I don't know that all the board members understood that that was a thing that we were doing. And these are the last of the numbered policies, which is why they're coming up for review this year.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Edwards, that's very, very helpful. So what is the pleasure of the board concerned? Obviously, fine work has gone into this on behalf of Dr., Director Brown and Deputy Pugh. What is your thought on this for tonight? Dr. Nellis?
I move to delete policies seven dash thirty-three point three, R seven dash thirty-three dot three, P seven dash fifty-six, R seven dash fifty-six.
All right.
And the, essentially what would happen is the rest of these would come back for another go-round.
All right, now, Dr. Nellis has that down very nicely in his head. And I'm not sure if the rest of us have it. But a motion is on the floor, is there a second, Mr. Harvey?
A second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. And we're going to now have questions and discussion, of course. We'll revisit the particulars of the motion. Dr. Brennan?
Just, I'd like clarification of which policies we're gonna vote on tonight.
Oh, we would delete, vote on deleting the first four that are listed that says under conversion or deletion.
I see it.
So thirty-three point three fifty-six?
Yeah, the two thirty-three point three, and the two fifty-six, fifty-sixes, seven dash fifty-sixes.
That we are deleting?
That we would, yes.
That we would vote on, too?
We're just voting on that.
We would vote to
Right.
To delete them.
To delete them.
Got it.
Okay.
And then we would come back and deal with the others, all right?
They would come back.
I think that has clarified, see how you can clarify things very nicely. Dr. Gupta, you're straight on that? I understand.
Just to delete these first four. That's the motion, just to delete it, nothing else, right?
Yes, that's what I understand the motion.
Only thing left is R seven twelve.
Right, we're not deleting that for now.
Plus LCS update the two below that.
That's not part of your motion, right? Your motion, is your motion just on the deletion?
Yes, it's just to delete.
Everything else remains.
To delete the first four.
For us to come back in a moment and vote on to approve.
Yeah, the first four items. And then what will come back is the school attendance zone regulation would come back as a, as a re-titled VSBA-style regulation. And then the two LCS update policies, those will all come back again for some additional consideration.
All right, any further questions or discussion on the motion to delete the four, a vote to delete the first four to come back? Any further questions? Then we're gonna ask the clerk to please call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to delete at this time the first four listed policies from consideration for tonight. All right?
Scoop up, Member Tross?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Now, is there a motion in regards to the remaining policies?
They're gonna bring those back.
They're gonna bring those back.
I moved, yeah, just, we need a motion to bring them back?
All right, I'm just trying to avoid the tabling process. So what we'll do, just next.
Yeah, we'll move the, move that the two LCS update policies and the school attendance zone regulation be brought back to us for additional consideration.
See, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harvey, and motion by Dr. Nellis. Any further questions or discussions, these will come back, I presume, at our next meeting. With further questions or discussion, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
School Board Member Tros?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, board, and I think some really good decisions have been made tonight. But now, Section J, New Business High School Program of Studies, Dr. Edwards?
Yep, so tonight we have before you, just for discussion, and probably a few more edits, because we were still adding pertinent information to high school program of studies. And I will note that also, we are changing the address for the Empowerment Academy in the high school program of studies. It's not reflected here, but I do know that they made note to change the address for that. And I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Pugh to discuss the changes, some of the changes that are in there.
Thank you again, Dr. Edwards and the school board. Before you, as mentioned, we have the revisions for the program, high school program of studies for the 2022-23 school year. First, I'd like to thank the staff at the division level, as well as the school level, who spent many hours working on these revisions and giving it consideration and thought. We have some supervisors from Student Services Department, as well as Curriculum and Instruction, and both high school counseling departments, who spent many hours working on these edits and revisions, so I want to thank them for their time, their consideration, and their thought. There are some changes, we are not gonna go over them all. I hope you've had the opportunity to look at what those proposed changes are with the additions and deletions that have, that are in the draft document. I've asked Dr. Bryant to be here to highlight and cover some of the major changes that you might see, and then give you an opportunity to ask questions. We also have high school, EC Glass High School English teacher Erin Reed with us at this time to answer any questions that may come up about the new AP course in African-American studies. So I will turn it over to Dr. Bryant to go over just some of the major changes for this year's program of studies.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Edwards. First, I'd like to go with the career and technical education edits, since that's my area. The main updates are to match the VDOE descriptions, so we changed the course descriptions, some of the sequences, prerequisites, and even some of the course titles to match the VDOE descriptions. Additions to the CTE include an opportunity to take economics or personal finance in the summer, and an entrepreneurship course that could be, that sequences with both business and marketing courses. So that would be beneficial to students, especially at the alternative setting, that may not have an opportunity to have a sequenced course, they could take the entrepreneurship course. One thing I'm very excited about is the CBCC Career Technical Education Academy, and that is for seniors who may be allowed to take CTE courses at CBCC for programs that are not offered by Lynchburg City Schools. The academy is shared with other school divisions, and enrollment is limited. The courses include, the course subject matters include Electrical Technology Fundamentals, Emergency Medical Technician, Health Sciences, Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning, Industrial Maintenance, Mechatronics, and Welding. So we're very excited about students taking those programs, and they can get to CBCC because it's on the same schedule as the STEM Academy. Some of the other changes are, the early college program has been a change in the literature courses offered, and this is a CBCC change. There's also a proposed change in dual enrollment math offered at the two high schools, and this is also in conjunction with CBCC. The STEM Academy, looks like there are plenty of changes, but it's just a change in the formatting and how the information is shared. So the STEM Academy looks different, but it's the same courses. We are also proposing that all dual enrollment courses have a five-point-oh course weight. The only exceptions are College Success Skills and Internships, which would remain a four-point-five course weight. This would change, would match what our neighboring divisions do. Also, addition would be the AP African-American Studies course, and this is a new college board AP offering, and I believe Erin Reed is on the line, and he could speak about it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dr. Bryant, and I'll, Erin, if you'll just wait just a second, and school board members, if you have any questions in particular, or if you'd like Erin Reed to go over the information about the AP African-American Studies, we can do that first, and then entertain questions later. What is your, what would you prefer?
Oh, I don't know.
Ms. Rico.
Keep going.
Let Erin-
Let Erin-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry to jump the gun there earlier. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Real quick, brief background for where this comes from. Last summer, summer of 2021, the College Board reached out to me to be a part of a group of teachers around the country to create the standards for one of several new classes that they are offering this coming year. And so the course that I worked on with educators across the country, creating standards, and just kind of talking about the overall scope of the course, was this AP African-American Studies course. And the most important thing to understand about it is that it is an elective course that is not inherently a history course, and it is not inherently an English course. It is, kind of as the title designates, a studies course, in the same way that a college or university might offer it. At the end of this summer, we were polled, those of us who are on that committee, were polled about whether our schools might be interested in being part of a kind of elite pilot group this coming year to pilot this course. And so I indicated that I was interested, and that was kind of the end of it. There was then some communication between the College Board and the school system that EC Glass had been selected as one of only thirty schools in the entire nation to go ahead with this pilot program if we were interested. So I am very excited about what this course could mean, not just for the school, but for the students who I think have an interest, a kind of inherent interest in the topics that this course would cover. I'm particularly interested in what this course can mean for our non-traditional AP students. I think in a big way, this can reach a lot of our students who otherwise maybe would not have ever considered an AP course. And so along those lines, I think it has a lot to offer. Again, I was a part of the group that put it together, so I'm here tonight. If you have questions about the course, I am happy to answer those. Thank you very much.
Boy, please, I reckon whenever the appropriate time to ask the question. Dr. Gupta?
So, thank you, Mr. Reed. My question is, does this course crosses what the discussion has been before, and we said we don't do, is a critical race theory? So there's no, is there a crossover there, or it's completely two separate sets?
The purpose of the course is to expose our young people to the writers and the thinkers from the history of African-American thought and philosophy and writing throughout the history of this country. And so, again, as a studies course, as a survey course, the concept is for kids to encounter what those writers and thinkers were doing, and for the kids to kind of critically assess some of that. That's, I think that's kind of the clearest answer that I can give.
Mr. Reed, you answered that very well, sir.
Well, you know, the question comes down to, who are the writers and the thinkers? You know, are you, is it gonna be a broad cross-section, or is it gonna be from one side of the aisle or the other, or, you know what I mean? I mean, that's where the issue comes down to. It's like-
Right, so as an English teacher, one of the things that happens at EC Glass, as the Chair of the English Department, when we are adding new authors to our courses in ninth grade or tenth grade, for example, there's a process that we have to go through when we are looking at texts like that. Just because this course isn't designated an English course doesn't mean that it doesn't go through that process. There would have to be teachers and a committee, the same way that when we adopt a book in an English class, it would have to go through those things. So I don't, I don't see this course operating outside of the boundaries of anything that we haven't already done in the past.
Dr. Carter?
You've stated that there would be topics. Do you have any examples to show what type of topics the students will be taught, or?
I don't have a list of topics. One of the things that they're looking at for courses like this, so the other AP course, one of the other AP courses that I teach is called AP Capstone. Mr. Tros' children went through that with me. And that is a course in which students actually have a great deal of control over the topics and the subjects that they're interested in. So I don't have a list of topics for this new course, partially because this coming summer, like every AP course, there's a week-long training that I would go to. I suspect that what the College Board is interested in doing as we move forward is empowering students to find voices that interest them, so that they can study them and study sort of the skills that some of those authors and thinkers work under. Again, some of that is just my, what I kind of gleaned from the work that I did this summer. When I go to training this coming summer, obviously, I'll know quite a bit more.
Dr. Carter?
I know that there may be parents that are concerned that this is gonna be an indoctrination course of trying to get more African-Americans on Black Lives Matter or some other type of, but this is, will be taken, will be taught just like any other course regarding the subject matter and student input?
Nodding his head in that primitive. Any further questions on this particular matter? Dr. Brennan, then Mr. Tros?
So, Mr. Reed, I'm very in support of this program, and I think the description is very appropriate, and I'm thrilled that you're in charge of it, too, as one of the really outstanding teachers at EC Glass, I know it will go well. One question, I just for clarification, is that there was a curriculum that we saw several months ago, that was sort of a state curriculum, that was also talking about Afro-American history. I take it this is a whole separate project than that project? So the state initiative that we've talked about before, this is different from that?
That's my understanding, and actually, I'm glad you asked that, because I do want to clarify, of course, you all already know, because you've seen the program of studies, we in fact have an African-American history class at EC Glass, and I don't know if Heritage offers it, but it's possible that they do as well. This in no way replaces that course. In fact, part of my conversations in my school with my principal and with some others see this as almost a partnership with that kind of a course. Again, this is not a history course, but I think that there is a benefit now for kids to take, let's say, African-American history and become interested in those writers and those thinkers, and then to find out that, well, there's now something that they can kind of move to, there's almost a sort of a phase two, as it were, with an AP class that is going to, you know, have some college-level thinking and writing going on with it, where maybe the student can self-direct for themselves towards some of these writers that they are interested in. And so we see it, we see these two courses really kind of working in concert with each other. But that's a long-winded way of answering your question, it's not, it's not related to what you've read from the state, or that very specific, like, history course.
Thank you very much.
Dr.?
Mr. Reed, good to see you. Yeah, I want to tell you, you are an outstanding instructor, and my children learn very, very important life skills and writing skills for me, I appreciate that. My issue is, I think I'd want to know a little bit more about it, and I appreciate your initiative to join this, I call it a kind of a test bed, if you will. Number one, I don't like to be on the bleeding edge of anything, and especially given the environment and the crises that we are in as a school system, just dealing with COVID and what have you, I'm a little concerned about being on, and I call it the bleeding edge, because as soon as we start saying something along these lines, we're gonna get a lot of flack on it, because people will interpret it, is this a CRT movement and things of that nature? Is there any way that we can get a little more information about the curriculum, the class itself, to kind of head those concerns off at the pass, so to speak? That's probably my biggest concern, is I don't want to set us up to be a target when, if that's a perception that people have, many times, perception becomes reality in other people's minds. And I just want to be very aware that we have enough crises going on, just dealing with COVID, the stress level on our staff and our teachers. I don't want to interject any more stress or crises, if you will, if we can avoid it, through education or what have you. In terms of educating the people, this is what this class is about, and it's an AP class, and it's meant to, you know, allow students to do X, Y, and Z. That's all I ask for. But again, I appreciate you, and you are an outstanding instructor, and I think it's well received. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Reed, I must admit, you explained it to me very, very well, and I think Mr. Tros and everyone have given some things, this is for information for tonight anyway, and we will be able to get pertinent things. But what I am most impressed with is that of thirty high schools, not just in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but in the United States of America, I'm assuming something that you put together, Mr. Reed, or whomever, was selected. I think that is commendable. Figure out all the pertinent pieces that we have learned that need to be addressed so that people can be comfortable with the content. All right, Dr. Edwards, what else do we have on this matter?
If there are no other questions on the program of studies, or things that you would like us to just go back and review, it will be coming back for approval, and I will say it'll probably be modified as, particularly with the CTE courses and things that are coming onboard, so.
I- Sorry, if there was further question, Dr. Carter, then Mr. Tros?
I see the Marine Corps Junior ROTC and Air Force Junior ROTC, is that now the Reserve Officer Training Program? So will it be offered in both schools, or still Heritage will have their own Reserve Officer Training, and then EC Glass, or how does that work now? How would that work now?
Yes, we have JR ROTC at both high schools. Heritage has it as a JR ROTC, and EC Glass has one as well. The change in there is that the state does not offer them as a semester course anymore, so they, and we've been using them as two semesters, so the change in the program of studies, it makes them a year-long course. So that's the change. They're available at both high schools.
Marine and Air Force?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, Mr. Tros?
I've gone through quickly here, I have not gone through in detail this document. However, I just, I want to understand, I noticed you had the introduction and then the deletion of the standard diploma requirements, advanced studies diploma requirements. I haven't looked to see what the issues are, the modifications. Can you address this quickly?
Deputy Pugh, can you address that? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure specifically what your, what the question is, Mr. Tros, and I'd have to have more detail and then probably get back to you.
Okay, what's the?
Where are you referring?
I'm starting at page nine, which is standard diploma course requirements for students, and then it looks like, and then page ten goes on to eleven, which is the advanced diploma requirements, and then twelve is redlined, portion thirteen, fourteen is redlined. And it's, we're pulling out one section requirements and replacing with the other, I just wanted, and I did not go to see what the differences are.
Certainly, and this is coming from the changes that I believe have been made by the state in terms of these cohort groups, is what's required for the different diplomas. So I believe this is where the change is coming from, but I will verify that and have more detail- more detail at the next, in between our next meeting. I can send that information out via email.
That is accurate, Deputy Superintendent Pugh, that these are the, the way they're listed is first-time ninth graders entering during this time. So, we had them in our book, but now, as we move past ninth graders who may have entered in 2017, 18, you'll see them being removed. And then, on the earlier pages, as you mentioned, it's students who entered as of 2018, so that's the current kids that we have.
Okay.
So, those are VDOE changes. We just had both, because the Program of Studies for quite some time was serving both sets of kids.
Yeah, so the, the students on, on page 14, for instance, the students who entered in, in ninth grade in 2011, 12, are no longer our students in LCS, so that, this information doesn't pertain to them.
Then, on page 28, the flowchart mathematics instructional sequence options is red, I guess that's redlined, and I just want to, is it replaced somewhere? So, we know the mathematics sequence, and maybe it just went from a flowchart to, to verbiage. But again, that's page 28.
Okay. It, it may have gone into the verbiage in the next description. The courses may have changed there, but I will follow up on that and send clarification as well.
Yeah, I believe that was true, Ms. Reed. I believe the flowchart may have been confusing, and it went into the verbiage instead.
Okay.
I'd just like to, as one board member, I'm so glad to see that thing go away.
I love flowcharts.
I've never been around.
Right. I'll verify that, but I, I do believe if, if you continue to read, the information is in, in the verbiage that's below.
I'll, I'll say I've, I've been around here long enough that that flowchart went, was put in there because the verbiage was found confusing.
Good luck.
Oh, boy. All right, well, Dr. Brennan?
So, one, one, one question is that the time period for canceling or changing classes was changed from 10 days to five days? I just wondered if, if there was, what the reason was for that? Changing withdrawal from class from 10 days to five days? And someone can get back to me or back to the board with the next session. I'm just a little surprised. You had 10 days before to make the change, and now it's five days.
Dr. Bryant, do you recall that being part of the discussion? I, I will have to admit, I was not part of the group that worked on this. As I, I mentioned earlier, I thank them for their, their time and their commitment and their consideration. I imagine it's, it's that by 10, by day 10, you're sort of far into content, and it's, it's more difficult to change a course, to drop a course and to add a course without the student being very far behind. But I will certainly reach out to the, uh, school counseling directors and verify that.
And it's difficult to start a new class after you, you're behind five days for...
Right.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? So, board, this will come back for us at our next regular meeting, I would suspect, concerning the High School Program of Studies, and all of the things that you've mentioned tonight will certainly be looked into by staff and vetted out in between the, now and the meeting. All right? Thank you all very much. Thank you so much. We now move to Section K, Superintendent's comments.
Absolutely. So, again, wishing everybody a Happy New Year, and we're off to an interesting start with a snowstorm and now this, but we are still excited to have our students back with us and listening to some of the wonderful things, you know, as Aaron Reed said, some of the selections and recognition of the hard work of our staff and, and students. I do appreciate the board extending the work time for staff. I think it is needed, even though it is a small amount of time, they, there is just a lot going on and being asked of staff. And I want to just kind of limit my comments right now to this being, and it keeps changing each time during the year, but Virginia Department of Education has selected this week as Principal Appreciation Week, so I just want to take time to acknowledge and celebrate the hard work that our principals, assistant principals are doing in our schools. And I'm sure if we all look back about five years at the job description of a principal, almost everything that they've, they're doing in a given day was not in that job description right now. It has truly, truly changed, and our principals are just top-notch. They have morphed with the changes. They are doing everything that they can to be all things for our students. There being the, the medical support, the social emotional support for our students and our families, and I couldn't ask for a better group of individuals to lead the building during such trying times where we are seeing struggles. We're seeing families' struggles, we're seeing students' struggle, and it has been difficult, but they have been rock-solid about keeping our buildings open and keeping their arms open to support not only their students. I mean, we've always known that that's been a big role that they've done, but I have to tell you that they have extremely advocated, particularly over the last two years, for the adults in the building as well. They have gone hard for the people in the building to, they have done some things to support them. They are covering classes themselves, and, and I'm sure if they could drive a bus and cover a class at the same time, they would. So, I would just like to take, take a moment and just absolutely thank our principals and our assistant principals during this week for their hard work and dedication to our schools, and just say kudos to them. And when, when we get to the other side of whatever the other side of this is and focus so much more time on instruction and academics, you are really going to see them shine in the way that they were meant, groomed, and trained to shine, but you're getting to see them shine in things that they're learning on the fly. And for that, I'm very, very grateful to the, to the group of principals.
Excellent.
Would you a round of applause for that?
Yeah.
All right.
That's it for me.
And thank you, and again, happy birthday to you, Madam Superintendent. All right, we're going to start board comments with Mr. Harvey.
I'd like to give a shout-out to Mr. Hank Hubbard and Mr. Nat Marshall. Both have been members of the Advisory Board for Partners in Education, and their dedication, commitment, and persistence has been what I believe has helped to somewhat navigate Partners in Education through a, through a, a, a short spell where we're trying to get that program reestablished and brought back to life. So, I just wanted to, to thank them for their service and their dedication and their persistence.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Dr. Gupta.
I wanted to wish Dr. Edwards happy birthday. I wish you had told us before, we could have Dr. Coleman buy you a cake.
Oh, Lord.
I wanted to share this thing. I don't want to share as advertising, so I want to make sure I'm not promoting a business, but you look at this sign, it says drivers earn $16 to $23 per hour, and this is a pizza delivery service, and they are paying $16 to $23 an hour to deliver pizza. Now, we are paying our drivers $12 an hour for delivering our precious assets from home to school and back to home. And if you don't know why we have bus problems, every year I've been hearing it's because of the wages we pay. And I told you last time, we have the lowest hourly wages around in surrounding counties. I know surrounding counties don't matter, but they do matter in terms of human resources. And if you hire, you compete that wages, so maybe this board could consider attacking one item. It's not possible to raise everybody's wages. Maybe we can, this year's budget, look at just drivers' wages. Look at it, the pizza, they can deliver pizza, why would they drive a school bus? They can make twice the money doing the same thing. So, I don't want to just say, when you see the proof, the proof is in the pudding, and the pudding is for Dr. Edwards' birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Sinha?
I just want to thank Dr. Edwards for her participation in the earlier meeting today with Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations, and she patiently listened to some of the issues and concerns and suggestions for how we improve community relations and communications. It's a, it's a really complicated constellation of issues and problems and time constraints and differing needs, and she's really in a know-win situation. So, I really appreciate the community having patience with us as we really try hard to provide everybody with the information they need in a timely manner. Sometimes timeliness is just impossible. I mean, things are moved rapidly and quickly, and it's often difficult to know when to inform, how to inform, why to inform. So, they're doing the best they can. Everybody is stressed to the max. Some issues we can change and correct, and we will do that where we can, but everybody just needs to, we all just need to be kind with each other and have patience and try to work together as best we can. So, thank you to you and your team for trying different approaches, multiple ways to reach people. Keep trying, keep doing that, and we're bound to succeed at some point.
Thank you, Dr. Sinha. Dr. Neillis?
Yeah, I just want to thank all the staff, the administration, Superintendent, happy birthday, by the way, down to custodial folks, bus drivers. It's, this is a tough time. Every day's different. Every day brings up new challenges, and people have to adapt, and it's, it's, we keep thinking it's going to get better, and it just keeps going on and on, and I just want to say thanks to everybody.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Neillis. Dr. Carter?
I'd say happy birthday to Dr. Edwards, and also just want to say, today I had an experience trying to buy a product, and I asked for help, and the person just stood there, and I said, "Well, can you help me buy a product?" And he, they just stood there, and I said, "Well, can you, you know, I need some help." And so, what I'm saying now, I know that we are all short-staffed, but if you're here and if you're working, go ahead and work and talk to the people or your customers to help them with whatever you have. Don't just stand there and just, like, you're just here, you know, sell. We can still sell our product. We're still LCS, so regardless of where we are or how many are there, we can stand around and we can complain that we're overloaded, and we, we aren't busy, or we can help and ease frustrations. But that's so frustrating to stand there and you don't know anything about a product, and you're supposed to find out all the specs yourself. So, if any way we can help to get the message out or to make sure that we, the message is out, just to have people, how they connect with it, and that'll be helpful, and just to make sure that we're doing all we can to make sure we're communicating, and because that really lessens frustrations. Instead of complaining, we can, and no one's complaining that I've heard, but just saying, you know, if someone comes up to you and they need assistance, just let them know all the options that are available, what they can do. And I do want to thank everyone. Everyone is doing just amazing work from the, if you look at how many students that our employees come in contact with, it's amazing that they are coming and still have an energetic mind and energetic and able to help all the students and continue to want the best for LCS.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Ms. Morrison?
Well, my thoughts and sentiments reflect what everyone has said. I am so appreciative for all the board members and the work that we are doing, but especially the staff. They're there on the front lines with our students, and I just, I am so grateful to have my grandchildren getting a great education, so I am grateful. And I want to say to Dr. Edwards, "I just don't know how you accomplished everything, and you're only 29." I want your secret.
I like that.
Happy birthday.
Ms. Morrison, very good. Dr. Brennan?
I just want to say briefly that I made the analogy before between, between the hospital and the schools, and I think that there's another analogy there, which is that the healthcare providers are doing what they're doing because it's a vocation, and they're so dedicated to helping people, and I just think it's the same situation for all of our staff, whether they're custodians or teachers or bus drivers or substitute. I think they're there because they want to help our children, they want them to be educated, they want them to be safe, and I just want to also thank the other board members then for what they have done. It's way beyond what they signed up for, and thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Tross?
I want to echo those sentiments. I also want to just ask the parents to bear with us, bear with the school system. It's a difficult situation, and, you know, adults take an interest in your children. Ask them what they did today. Get involved, even if you can't be there, doing a tutorial, whether, you know, take an interest. Ask them what their day was, and that will go a long way, and maybe making sure they stay focused in, if they're doing the in-home school or want to get back to classes. Ask them what they're doing, make sure they're doing the homework, make sure they got the nose to the grindstone, and set them up to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tross. I did ask the clerk to provide a copy to each of you. It's entitled Continuing Your Master Board Designation, and again, congratulations to this board on being a master board, and good things are being said about us around the Commonwealth. And this is just a sheet. Dr. Carter and I'll get with you. We have to choose one of these three options. They're very simple, as we continue that designation, and you can just look at that, and I won't labor that point tonight, but we just need to decide. They're all one-day sessions. We do an annual self-evaluation supposedly anyway, every year, et cetera, so we'll, we'll look into that. Just want you to have that for your information, and we'll get that straight. At this time, in Section M, the information items are before you. Various committees acknowledge when they will be meeting next. Please regard the fact that on January the 25th, we will have our school board work session, and we'll be getting back from Richmond. Dr. Sinha will be here in ample time for that 5:00 meeting, and then the school board meeting on February, the, the February the 1st.
We can take a little...
At this time, Section N, Notice of Closed Meeting. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, the school board needs to convene a brief closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters of Superintendent's evaluation. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
A move that we go into closed meeting?
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Any further questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Goodbye, ma'am. Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Goodbye, ma'am. Dr. Morrison?
Yes.
Goodbye, ma'am. Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Goodbye, ma'am. Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Goodbye, ma'am. Dr. Neillis?
Yes.
Goodbye, ma'am. Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
Goodbye, ma'am. Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
And goodbye, ma'am. Mr. Harvey?
Yes. All right, public, thank you, and again, shout-out to the staff on that message that went out. I thought it was tremendous, and we're getting the word out. We'll go into our brief closed meeting, take a couple of minutes to get into that, and then we'll be out of here as fast as we go in, I think. Enjoy.